Good evening. Everybody hear me alright? Good, great. Welcome to our six o'clock study session. This is a virtual meeting using the Zoom platform. Members of the public can view this meeting live on channel eight or C three gov dot com slash video. If you're a council member, please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on channel eight and on our city's website. The chat function has been disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I and RIT director will be the co-host. For tonight's study session, council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized by myself as the mayor. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruptions. This time we'll call the meeting to order. And first on the agenda is a oil and gas LDC update presentation. Would Jason Rogers, Director of Community Development, please introduce the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Glad to be here tonight. We'll be having Dominic Martin Alley, our local government designee, also the environmental planner for City of Commerce City, presenting tonight's oil and gas presentation before council. There are some slides we will want to walk through with you first and foremost in regards to the night's objective and hopefully fruitful conversation that will come from our presentation and associated documents that have been uploaded to part of the agenda packet. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dominic to take us through the presentation and discussion portion.
Thank you, Director Rogers, and thank you to Honorable Mayor and City Council. As Jason said, I will be getting tonight's presentation. Give me a second here as I start sharing the screen and we'll run through this presentation here. There's a general couple of quick items that we wanted to run through just in terms of meeting format and how this presentation is laid out. I know many of you have had the opportunity to review the presentation prior to tonight's meeting as part of the presentation packet. So, next slide here. So basically, this initial slide here is to discuss meeting objectives and overview. So the the potential outcome of tonight's meeting, tonight's meeting could be to establish council consensus on the feedback and comments that were provided. So as you know, we had a June eighth study session where we discussed a number of proposed changes by staff based on the public comment period that was between March tenth and May twenty ninth. So essentially what we're looking for here is is following that study session. There was direction to provide each individual council member to provide staff feedback regarding the draft LDC updates. And we did receive correspondence from all nine council members on the proposed updates. So what the documents that were included within the packet are are basically staff's responses to the comments that were provided from council and then proposed staff red lines and response. So within the presentation tonight, we're essentially going to go through and talk about each topic or group of topics one by one. And then essentially just stop and have a quick discussion about whether any further consideration by council is desired. If this item is adequate as is, or if there's new language that needs to be proposed, to kind of go through each of one of the individual topics of a raised and analyze that. So as I, as I mentioned, there's each general topic category that has a preceding slide and then a following slide as well. So as we go through this, where staff has proposed changes, it'll be highlighted in red where there's additions and then anywhere their strikeouts are removals. So we're going to start with the first topic here regarding service use agreements. So multiple council members through the the comments that were provided to staff requested additional discussion regarding honoring of existing service use agreements as it relates to city standards or providing some mechanism to provide or to bring SUAs into compliance. So there are a number of scenarios that this was accounted for and particularly as it relates to reverse setbacks and citing of residential lots adjacent to oil and gas facilities. So to account for that, there is a proposed language which is called the modifications to oil and gas standard regulations, which would allow for some minor variations up to twenty percent of a setback value or reverse setback value that would be approved by Mayor and City Council. And then some other considerations to help facilitate this discussion as it pertains to honoring service use agreements and having some sort of deviation from what eventually ends up being adopted code. There should be some consideration and thought regarding the variation between the code and the SUA and what level of reduction would be tolerable to protect health, safety, welfare and the environment. One thing to mention is the city's involvement in service use agreements are extremely limited. Those are negotiated between a landowner and an operator. And the initial assessment process is another consideration that the code could have in terms of working with potential operators to help determine what might be suitable locations compared to others in terms of health, safety, welfare protections and having those conversations prior to reaching out to landowners. So then as part of that, you can see the proposed modification to Article five where it goes through the oil and gas standards and regulations. And there was one additional council member that requested a brief discussion on when modifications could be allowed. And there were questions about all affected residents, including homeowners, renters and unanimous consent among all of those and that a public hearing would be required. And there was also a request to look at elimination of variances near schools. And then another thing that could be discussed with as part of that is what the minimum threshold qualifies for near is. So what what's the distance from the boundary of a school site? Is that two thousand feet? Is a thousand feet? What is what is the qualification for that? So with that, let's take a quick brief break here and and have a quick discussion. Do we feel that these topics are adequately addressed in the draft and the proposed red lines recommended by staff? Or there are additional language changes that would be necessary to incorporate in a final draft before bringing back to council?
If I may add, Dominic, you know, the the purpose for the discussion slide is really to be able to help drive a conversation with council so that we as staff can then respectfully go back and refine language if need be. Or if there is a consensus with the language that has been proposed in the March ten draft and the June eighth study session red lines, then we would obviously incorporate or keep and move to the next topic for discussion. And once again, continue discussion amongst council members in direction back to staff.
I have a question. In terms of surface use agreements, are we suggesting that an agreement between an operator and a landowner might trump our regulations?
Can you elaborate a little bit more on that in terms of whether an SUA, so you're basically saying that the SUA would override the city's regulations?
Correct.
So I think that that was part of the discussion tonight. That's not a proposal essentially at this point, but having that discussion, if if council collectively feels that there should be some provision to look at. Matt, you're you're shaking your head. Is there anything you'd like to weigh in on?
Yeah, I'm just waiting to be recognized. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, private parties cannot contract to around the law. The law is the law, just because someone's entered a private agreement with someone doesn't mean they can violate that. So no, that's not something that they can do, just like we cannot enter a contract that would to, that would break our own rules or regulations, private parties cannot do that.
And I think to further that, I think the question that Dominic was trying to pose, the responses that we received was do we want to bring the surface use agreement? I'll say into our process of review and an analysis as part of our land development code modification. And that was the question I believe also posed is do we want to do that or not?
In my opinion, it seems like it's necessary unless it's unless all operators are notified that any service use agreements they have have to be, have to comply with our regulations when they are implemented. I'm not sure what you would be driving at otherwise with this.
Okay. If I may ask, just around the table with council, obviously, we've heard from council member Noble about I don't want to call it a desire, but sharing of a thought and a potential position that it's worth considering as part of our overall evaluation of an oil and gas permit to understand certain details of the service use agreement. How does the rest of council feel about that incorporation or not as part of our evaluation process?
Would you guys mind explaining what the city, I'm sorry, Mayor? Are we raising our hands or can we just go for it?
Just go for it, just moderate yourselves.
All right, appreciate it. Sorry for jumping in there. Can the city explain their involvement in the SUA process in the past? I think for me, you know, I've heard the city told us to do this and okay, that's fine. But I just want to better understand from, say, maybe Dominic's perspective, what what guided the SUA? How did we get there? And I know we're not part of that, but we're talking about it now. So these surface use agreements, can we just go back in history a little bit and kind of get everybody caught up on on why they're there outside of, you know, a private agreement that may not match up with land development code?
Yeah, so I could provide a little bit of background on typically how that would work. So in the past, in terms of a service use agreement and how that's executed, a lot of times, and specifically in the past, those documents are negotiated between the landowner and rolling gas operators. So when evaluating mineral rights and where a potential operator could be located, they have to essentially work with and find a suitable landowner. So obviously, there's a couple of layers to the to the equation. So there's the operator needs to be able to adequately access surface acreage, a certain acreage size location to be able to access the targeted minerals that they have the lease rights to. So they'll typically engage in what's called a service use agreement with the landowner to help figure out where that is. And specifically with how this may have worked in the past for other sites in Commerce City is there may be some initial conversations with staff about potential language and where a facility might be located. But at the end of the day, where that location is determined and the conditions of that is not something that staff or the city would engage in negotiations back and forth with and did not see the documentation, the language on that prior to it being executed. And for Matt Sur and Matt Hader, if there's any additional considerations that you'd like to make on that, that's that's generally where that kind of stands. And a lot of times, this will happen prior to the city having a discussion with an operator. So they'll they'll often come sometimes and say, we have service use agreements for this location without having conversations about what complies with city code, what is a good location, all of those types of things.
So so the short story is, we're not involved in those private negotiations. We may learn a bit during the course of negotiations, because someone might reach out to us for a question about something and how a particular section of the code applies. One example, however, where we did have, where we were when extraction was negotiating with Legato, they're in Legato for their surface use agreement. We were informed of that because community development was aware of what was happening with Legato's plans. And then through the scope of our negotiation with extraction, we learned that they actually would have preferred a site that was further east. We at that point reached out to the owners of Legato and said, hey, just, you know, they'd be interested in a spot further east. The guy owners are like, that'd be great for us too. They hadn't communicated that really to each other. So that was something they allowed for their SUA that as is negotiated, but we were not involved in that process at all. That's just an example of how, when a question came to us, we were able to help the parties facilitate a better solution for them and for the city. And there's no guarantee that 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 other site was going to work out. But it was something that that happened, but we're typically, we're not involved. We don't, it's not, we don't have a role in that unless there's a question, they come to us about something about how the code might apply.
So, and please just bear with me a little bit, I'm just trying to lay some groundwork so we're all on the same page, because I want to talk about. Let's talk about one location and I don't care, not a specific one, but just for an example. If that locations within our growth boundary, but not annexed into the city, can you tell us where our legal authority is to make any type of ruling on someone's private property?
Sure, so something that's not in the city, we have no authority to regulate. No, so if something say is in Adams County, that falls within the jurisdiction of Adams County and their rules apply.
Even if it's in our growth boundary?
That's correct. If it's not in our city, we do not have any authority to regulate it.
Until it's annexed. Now, what about annexed, forced annexation situations? No, if there's forced annexation, now we're we're forcing annexation and forcing our rule, our law on them. What's the scenario?
On the future development there, yes, but if they were to already have something up and running when they're annexed, then they're going to continue to operate under those rules.
And we might not annex them, right? Because they don't now comply with our laws and if they don't agree to shut down, then we can't.
I'm sure at that point, there'd be a host of considerations and reasons to annex and also not to annex. So that would not be a foregone conclusion by any means.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure we learned on legal groundwork of some areas that we're talking about, because in some situations I I've had in the past, I don't think we have any conversation because it's not, it's not of our business yet. You know, it's in our growth boundary, but it's not it. We have an interest, but we don't have an authority. That's really what I'm trying to say.
Sure, so in the same way that we might have an application that we refer out to Adams County for something that's close to them, they might do the same with us. And I believe some of the new rules that we're seeing from COGCC would allow for that as well. Is that accurate, Dominic? Or Matt Sur, if you can comment on the the COGCC and the referral to neighboring communities?
Yeah, that's correct. Go ahead, Dominic.
I was going to say, so yeah, that that is something that they are contemplating. So if you're within two thousand feet of a jurisdictional boundary, so let's say that there's a plant facility within two thousand feet of Commerce City's limits in Adams County, there would be a consultation process where the city could essentially intervene and and be able to provide feedback and have more specific citing discussions and locations with their local government designee and the God Oil and Gas Conservation Commission regarding that facility.
So essentially, we're preventing in that situation or or COGCC could be preventing in that situation from someone tucking a well in the corner of their property or their boundary line and then it affecting your neighboring community without input. Okay, I just quite honestly, you know, I've made it well known that one of my big stick marks is moving goalposts on people and coming in and changing what you can do with your property and basically eliminating property rights and situations. One of my big sticking points forever has been that I've never once considered my position to go against, you know, health or any, you know, we talk about welfare as well, well, I know about seven people on my street that's welfare will be completely destroyed if oil and gas goes away. So that's part of the equation always for me as well. This is trying to find a balance and so trying to understand legal land use prior to having, you know, long discussions about things that are in our control seems to be pertinent to me.
I think, though, we need to take a step back even further. We will get to it later on in this discussion and that is certain interpretation of communal of impacts. So we can't ignore the fact that some of these are within our growth boundaries. For example, Ackard North, which is right next to Blue Jay, has a very direct impact considering the fact that there will already be some sixty wells or so in that area between Blue Jay, potentially Redtail and Owl and Falcon, and then you want to add Ackard North. Those are all going out from one twelve, one hundred and twelfth and C four seventy. So it's something to look at. I know that Councilmember Grimes and you were the two who raised this. And I'm wondering what Councilmember Grimes' interest is in this SUA discussion as well.
Yeah, happy to comment. I was just waiting, waiting my turn. I was also curious about the SUA because the way it was presented to me was similar to what it sounds like Councilmember Hurst heard in the, with respect to it almost sounded like the city encouraged an SUA to protect setback measures in some instance. And so I just wanted clarification on that because what, like Councilmember Hurst, I don't want to move goalposts if if that was in fact true. I wanted to make sure that we were preserving any agreements that we had made if that was the case. And so I raised it only as a question for clarification.
So getting back to the conversation. I would add, where is council as a body with regards to any further refinement? Or are we okay with what we have presented as part of our public draft in June eighth, based on the explanations that you received from staff and the cross communication on being able to move to the next topic? Or is there further discussion that is still wanted?
So just to clarify the point, Director Rogers, it's an SUA can exist still as long as it minimally meets our LDCs, right? I mean, they can have an additional private agreement all they want. It just has to be minimally met by our LDCs. So that's the, that's the baseline. They can do, if they have higher expectations, please, please, you know, have your own agreement on that. But is that what we're all saying right here? Is they just have to have a minimum baseline of our LDCs and they can SUA till they're blue in the face?
Sure, I I think if I could, because we're not involved in that process, we don't negotiate the SUAs. They can agree to all sorts of things that would violate our code, that would violate all sorts of laws that would not meet our minimum requirements. But when they actually go to get things done, they have to comply with our requirements. It doesn't matter that they're, that they might have contracted for something different. But we do not interfere with their authority or their ability to contract. But we still enforce our code regardless of their contract. So yes, the code still functions as that minimum.
So Councilmember Hurst, another good example, I think that's relative, I think what we all find out. Let's say we have a grocery store that comes in and is compliant with the basic zoning for the property. But they may then enter into an agreement with the property owner for further restrictions of not allowing a similar use to move into the shopping center. That's above and beyond what the code requires. It's no different than thinking about that in in that sense in life.
I would just clarify, though, Director Rogers, that an SUA in this context is generally related to surface only and where a location will be placed on a private surface owner's land. It's not generally related to additional regulation. And my concern was specific to comments that we received during the public comment period as it related to to certain pads and platted areas of the city. My concern is that if the city encouraged that agreement to happen and then we set a setback regulation that changes the ability to develop as the plan was laid out. I want to make sure that we aren't moving the goalposts, so to speak, like Mr. Hurst has suggested. And so I just, my clarification was, was that conversation had with the city and the developer and the operator at any point to encourage them to protect platted properties from setbacks? And, you know, if that was the case, we we can't move the goalpost and say now, well, sorry, you're, you've planned this project and we're going to make a setback regulation that wipes out your plans, you know, that's my concern. And so I just wanted feedback on whether or not that agreement was encouraged by the city. If it was entered into completely separate from city and city direction, that's that's between the developer and the operator. Just wanted clarification to make sure we're not changing the rules late in the game.
I'd like to piggyback on Councilmember Grimes' question because it gets back to my original question. Does the SUA trump our regulations? And if our regulations are calling for various citing options for citing analysis, for example, any agreement that has been made in advance with the surface owner would then, would that then affect the city's ability to change the citing of the pad?
To answer your, answer Councilmember Noble's question first and then back to yours, Councilmember Grimes. No, the SUA does not trump the land development code standards or requirements as they would be adopted by council. As it relates, Councilmember Grimes, to your conversation, to your feedback or question as it relates to was the city a party to an SUA discussion, I have Dominic here to speak to that, given that he's had firsthand knowledge of that.
And yeah, I can provide a little bit of background and context. So if we're talking about the specific location that's being mentioned here in terms of that conversation and how that went. So again, the city was not a party to the the process of negotiating that service use agreement. The city was aware that 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 agreement was occurring. But as it pertains to reverse setback measures and that type of thing, keep in mind, when the regional operator agreement was being processed and negotiated and that type of thing, this was way before the city had direction to begin the land development code updates and dive into reverse setback measurements. And given that at the the time, the specific concept for the residential filings surrounded it was not really brought into place or thought or conceived yet, which wasn't able to be considered when that service use agreement was in place. And then going forward, the regulations as the city adopted them or was working to draft regulations and evaluating reverse setbacks and in terms of best management practices and other jurisdictional efforts. Looking at that, there, that's where that gap occurred.
And Dominic, is it correct that I think we're talking about this the pad and the agreement with Oakwood Homes, the full and wider property? And there's the houses, potential homes, there's nothing, there's no planted lots around that, correct?
There's nothing been formally planted, that's correct.
Thank you.
So in terms of your original question on, you know, whether staff should review the SUAs, I think absolutely. In terms of how Dominic alluded to before, where, you know, sometimes the city is privy to some information, working firsthand with the operators that may have not been communicated to the landowners. And to try to get the best location that works for everyone, you know, I think legally, right, it's a private contract that we're not involved, we're not a party in this contract. And they have to follow the law like anyone else. They can't write an agreement, a legal contract that breaks the law. So I think from that point, it would be not in the city's best interest to review the whole thing, make sure that everything complies with the land development code. I mean, if we do review it and there's something that's, you know, glaring that this is not in compliance with their land development code, then I think we do have we do have to say something and correct that, but you know, these are companies that do this all the time and they know the space and the laws that they work in. And so I think in terms of making sure that it's the best location that works for everyone, the city should review it, but not to review every single thing to make sure that it complies with our land development. But not to review every single thing to make sure that it complies with our land development code because ultimately that falls on the landowner and the operator to write that correctly.
So just for clarification, am I, am I hearing that you want us to somehow get involved in these private agreements between parties and the SUAs to see if they comply with the code? Is that what's being suggested?
No, I think people have been, you know, asking about that. I think we should review them as part of our due diligence, you know, to make sure that these locations are, you know, what we expect or that the contracts are what we expect, you know, in terms of what's been submitted with the city. But I, I don't think that we can, you know, review every single contract because it is a, or every single aspect of the contract because it is between two private parties. And it does have to comply with the laws, which will ultimately be our land development code. So our job here is to make sure that we have the land development code spelled out to what they need to follow. And then the SUAs should fall into place after that.
Okay, so you're just, you're basically saying we take a look at it. And I would just note that in a lot of situations, the landowners and developer will actually record these SUAs as well.
Then another thing to add, Councilmember Daria, in, in the specific circumstances we were talking about. So the city was aware this was going, but there are certainly other times where the city may not even be aware that a service use agreement has already been executed. So to the extent that that's possible to intervene, that's, that's certainly a consideration.
Yeah, I, I think that's a valid point because, right, this isn't a contract between the city. But where they are willing to allow us to review that, then I think that's ultimately all the authority that the city has in terms of these SUAs, right? Because as long as they comply with our land development code, we don't have any real, we're not negotiating these.
I would just add also that SUAs, you, you're required to post those with your, your COGCC permit applications. And so it is a requirement at that level, just, and it's only to make sure that you have permission to use the land. It's not necessarily the citing piece of the permit application. And so I think, Oscar, what you're getting at maybe is the citing analysis. And I think that's where the city has more oversight as far as have we evaluated the appropriate locations as required by the land development code? And does it meet the land development code requirements where they ultimately choose to put the, the pad? The SUA is kind of secondary to the citing analysis.
Thank you, yes. Councilmember Grimes, I was going to say you would know better than most. And yes, it is in the package and you can find those on the COGCC website. I have read many service use agreements that are posted for all of these. You're, you should check and make sure all of the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed. And, and as long as it doesn't affect the citing of the pad, then it would seem to be no issue.
So I, I would just suggest we move forward with the way that you presented it at our last meeting. Since the city has limited oversight anyway, and they would have to comply with requirements once an agreement's made anyway. I, I don't see any reason to change it right now.
Okay. So what I currently, what, I want to make sure that I'm hearing everybody correctly. And obviously what I have on the table is not to change the language that as proposed. But I've also heard from a couple of council members as well that if we do choose to include surface use agreements, that it is a submittal requirement or documentation that is submitted as part of the alternative site analysis to help better understand potential impacts and/or evaluation with the land development code standards that we have in place. So I have two different directions on the table, looking for where the body would like to move that forward. Do further refine or to agree with staff draft and move on to the next item?
I, I think we should stick with the current draft.
If I may go around the table, Councilmember Smith, I see you're trying to.
Can you put it on the screen, please? It would be easier for us if people can actually see the modification, go back a slide, please. Thank you.
I think we stick with what staff has prepared for us already.
If I may, Councilmember Guardiola, do you have any thoughts or questions on the, on the item?
No, I'm fine with the draft that you guys have.
Thank you, sir. Looking at my screen, Councilmember Hurst?
I'm good with the draft.
Councilmember Grimes?
I prefer the modification where there's an option to, to seek relief with a council approval, i- if that's how I'm reading it correctly. That would be my preference, that there's an opportunity to seek a variance.
I, I thought that's what I was voting on too, is what's in the red line. I, I like what's in the red addition right there. And really because I think we can't think of all scenarios. And so having a potential relief where we would have a nine, you know, nine person boat makes the most sense to me.
Yeah, and to, to clarify, so Councilmember Hurst said correctly. So if we're talking about optioning here, that's with what staff's current proposed language is the modifications to oil and gas standards and regulations plus what was released in the, the March ten draft.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, I would agree with the modifications, but I just want to make sure, clarify. Is there, was there a specific setback in this? You know, is that, is that official yet what the setback is going to be?
Are you referencing the reverse setback?
Yes.
So that will actually cover that in the next one. This one, we're specifically talking about any modifications that need to be made surrounding the SUA discussion. And then an acceptance of staff's proposed essentially modification process. There is, there would be a limitation on how much of a relief could be sought through the modification of twenty percent. So if you have a minimum setback of a thousand feet, the maximum that you could potentially reduce that to would be eight hundred or twenty percent of that value.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And they not, I'm fine as, you know, with the modifications as staff proposed.
Thank you. Councilmember Noel? I think you're on mute, ma'am.
So we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about the SUA on one slide and we're talking about modifications on the second slide. What, which are we discussing? Is the modification language applicable to both surface use and any modifications?
So the reason these two are linked together and specifically regarding, regarding the SUA discussion, if there's a scenario where a service use agreement has some sort of discrepancy from a location standpoint, they could potentially seek a modification up to twenty percent to account for that. So that being said, that the language that's proposed as it pertains to modifications is related to it in that way. If you wanted to kind of talk about them separately and have some additional consider, language that we can consider, we can evaluate that as well.
Yes, because I don't see them as the same thing. One of them is about how do you have a community input into modifications? And the other one is the city isn't necessarily saying, thinking that they need to get involved in the service use agreement other than seeing the final draft and making sure it complies in some fashion or letting them know that it complies in some fashion. So putting these two together isn't making sense to me, I'm sorry. How do they go together for you, Dominic?
As I had explained, so that, as they relate in that specific scenario, if you want to discuss, I know that there was some additional language that you brought forward regarding consideration on modifications and who would be required to be notified, we can potentially have that discussion as well. If you have additional language you'd like to propose.
I did, I did actually propose it in my comments. So I do believe that when there are modifications or variances, that it shouldn't be placed in the hands of the department. I wanted to see it be more formalized so that the community had input on any variances or modifications. It's too tempting, I think, to build relationships that can lead to modifications and variances being approved. And I would like to shine a light as brightly as possible on every aspect of this oil and gas process. It doesn't mean that the oil and gas projects aren't going to be approved. That has nothing to do with it. It has everything to do with doing it in front of everyone, doing it publicly so that we all know what's happening. I don't want someone in my ward to come to me afterwards and say, how did this happen? And for me to throw up my hands and say, I don't know, I don't know what happened. We've been in that position too many times and only had that same conversation within the last six weeks regarding prairie dogs. So I think it's really critical that we actually play a role in this and not put all of the decision-making in the hands of one person.
Dominic, if I may, I, I, good comments, thank you, Councilmember. We do have a section where we will go through the philosophical question about administrative versus quasi judicial process and approvals for a variety of different aspects of oil and gas permits. I guess after hearing this and kind of going broad brush, I would say the majority of what I'm hearing with response, with, with respect to this question is a thumbs up versus a thumbs down with the matter of the modifications that have been included as part of the SUA discussion that Dominic brought forward. And whether or not we have that consent, consensus thumb up on our approach to allowing a modification process to take into account various aspects of certain, I'll say citing of sites and/or hardships potentially within respect to that. So going back and looking at the, the numbers, I suspect that, and I would ask, do we have a thumbs up on this matter? And then obviously can talk through some of the other philosophical questions that have come up. That I know that we have very pointed responses and discussion items that we want to jump into with you all with respect to that.
Okay, I would not approve of this change because my question originally was whether the service use agreement could trump our land development code, a modification or a variance allows for that to occur. So no, I don't agree with this.
I do want to point out that the proposed modifications to oil and gas standards and regulations proposed says shall be reviewed by the planning commission and approved by city council. So as it pertains specifically to this modification waiver, there's additional slides further in the presentation that discusses notification requirements in terms of what, what radius the public is notified of a certain application. But as we, as we speak about the proposed modifications language, this would be a council approval, it would not be at the staff level.
Okay, then I accept it, thank you.
So if I may, once again, do we have a thumbs up from the council on this matter? Looks as though that we do. So Dominic, do you want to move to the next subject or next topic of interest?
Yes. So reverse setbacks, there were multiple council members in the, the comments provided to staff that requested discussion on a reverse setback requirement, actually keeping that reverse setback at one thousand feet for the lifetime of the well. There were additional requests for up to two thousand feet or higher. Given that the proposed setback in the March ten draft as it relates to reverse setbacks. So again, this is the setback from a newly constructed home to an existing facility is right now at a maximum of five hundred feet and then tapers between four hundred and three hundred feet, depending on the size of the facility. The scale and the significance of the air quality impacts and other potential negative externalities is far greater during the drilling and completion phase of development. So when this, this reverse setback was contemplated in terms of having a significant amount of feedback from different stakeholders and interested parties in the rulemaking that the reverse setback would be higher during the drilling and completion phase since around eighty percent of the significant impacts are during that time and then potentially scaling it down to an appropriate size for the lifetime of the well up until it's bugged and abandoned. Sort of balance competing demands, having that, that stagger and that additional setback measurement was why that was instituted in place. So again, discussion going around the, the room here. Does council, A, feel that this topic is adequately addressed? And B, or B, have additional language changes to recommend to staff? So we can have a discussion on that and then go around the room and say, for each individual council member, do I feel A, do I feel B? And then if collectively there's recommended language changes, have discussion on what that might be. So another way to do that would be just kind of thumbs up, changes or no changes.
I'll, I'll start off, I mean, I'll go back to when we first made this, you know, started talking about this draft. You know, my feeling is based off flow. It should, you know, obviously during production, drilling and production, we, we gotta, we gotta take into account the, the considerable difference in activity. And the reverse setback at a thousand foot makes sense then. But as, you know, the life of the well goes on and air quality and every, basically the flow slows down. I think that our reverse setback can adjust with that. You know, obviously it's more eloquently put than what I just said. But to me, that makes sense where we're, we're recognizing the, the issue and we're adjusting it as its severity is there.
Councilmember Hurst, so I can better understand that, that comment. So I, I think we, we did hear that initial comment when we were having this discussion the first time. And as it pertains to flow, and Matt, sir, if you want to weigh in and, and jump in additionally. So that could be derived in a number of ways. So is that, once the, the production level hits a certain percentage or amount? Or basically saying that once the flow becomes a certain level, then that's when our reverse setback will be triggered? Or something along those lines because the, the actual flow and the amount of oil that's produced over the lifetime of the well is varying depending on what stage you're in. I think you're on mute.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's what I'm getting at is that there's different stages in the process. And I think, at least I would think we all agree that there's different impacts at, at different stages of the, of the process. And so understanding those, the one, the one addition that I've always thought was necessary, and you guys might cover this later because I know we did talk about it in the past, I just didn't see it in my review, was making sure the language on any closing document clearly lays out all the environmental numbers that we have, all the environmental data that we have, or at least a very open statement about what somebody's closing on a house on in the area, understanding the oil and gas operations in the area. At a new build is something that, you know, people get excited, they got their, their home and they don't want to spend the three or four hours to read their closing documents. Well, how do we, you know, make sure that they're signing and understanding that, you know, they're buying a new home in an area that has oil and gas operations? I think if we do our due diligence there or have some type of requirement, that matching the That matching the the. Different types of operations that there are in the process with our reverse setbacks makes the most sense to me.
I would just piggyback on those comments, I've I've also said for a long time and agree with Councilman Hurst. Um some sort of a disclosure statement in your closing documents. Uh just like a disclosure for lead-based paint, you know, I think a disclosure in your closing documents would go a long way to. Inform people of the activity in the area. Um and I but I would also say with regards to reverse setbacks, if we're going to have a reverse setback, I think it has to be scalable. Um based on activity. Um taking place, and so you know, during the more uh what I think you guys refer to as nuisance times, um one thing, there's more traffic, more. Um activity, more noise, things like that, um I think that makes sense, once you're in production mode, um that. Site becomes much smaller, the traffic becomes much less, um the noise becomes much, much less. I don't, I think that's the appropriate time to shrink your your reverse setback.
So to thank you, Councilmember Grimes, I think to answer the comments that we have, uh currently, we do not have. A a standard or requirement for an environmental disclosure. Uh as it relates to platelots, platelot properties and or at closing time. Uh so we've heard that comment, we will circle back around to that. Uh I would say obviously with the reverse setback, uh as what Dominic had communicated. During the drilling and completion phase, we have a one thousand foot setback. During the production phase, we have the scalable. Um the scalable reverse setback that drops from a thousand to five hundred, four hundred, three hundred based. On the number of wells that that well pad site has. Um the comments that we had received were making that a universal uniform one thousand across the board regardless of phase. Of completions drilling and production and an additional comment received of increasing it from a thousand feet to two thousand feet. I think where Dominic was going was with the initial. Request is are we a thumbs up with what staff has proposed on that gradient scalable. Reverse setback, which obviously now uh going back to the modification language. Allows for council discretion if able to meet certain approval criteria. To allow for a modification of that of that setback during the drilling's completion and or during the production phase. Or thumbs up or thumbs down to that, or wanting to seek. Further refinement of that language and then what that refinement is, I see I have a thumbs up from Councilmember Hurst on adopting the language that we have proposed. From March tenth, March and June eighth, but. That was where uh the questions were 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 within regards to what was proposed by staff and what we have.
Um, I would be a thumbs down, and here is why. We are addressing pads that have up to thirty-two, thirty-six wells on them. In. Areas that are building out to be residential. For the most part, or close to residential, particularly if you're on the west side of uh this entire. Oil and gas activity effort. The second reason is is that completions are done repeatedly through the life of a site. They will come back and track again and track again, so all of the things that are involved in odors, noise. Um. Uh emissions, that kind of thing are certainly occurring, and there is no. The third reason is there is no guarantee that there are not emissions off of. Any of the equipment that's on the site as it is, so at a minimum, I believe that the. Reverse setback needs to be the same as the setback. Um the other direction at a minimum. So whether it's a thousand or two thousand, I will note that uh Broomfield has passed a two thousand foot setback. And Erie is looking at the same thing right now, and I do think that they are two communities that we need to really take a hard look at. Because they have similarities to us in terms of the amount of residential. Um areas that are impacted. And these are changes that they're making on the basis of complaints from residents, so. It's just, um it appears to me that setbacks and reverse setbacks should at least. Match. Start at a thousand, but I would prefer to see two thousand.
So if I may, council, um obviously taking that comment and taking obviously what we've put into writing for you all. Do you all, is it thumbs up, thumbs down from a a council consensus with increasing the setback? Above and beyond the one thousand that's been identified by staff?
Wait, 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 can I go back a minute? It's not just the one thousand. Director, it is also that it scales down, so if it's one thousand, that's fine. But you scale it down, so you when you describe this, you need to describe it as it is. Including the scaling when you're asking the question of council members, thank you.
Just another clarification, so the actuals and we're talking about like the normal setback from a new facility to existing homes. That's covered elsewhere in the presentation, so we're talking solely about the reverse setback and whether or not. There should be elimination of the scaling down and should be consistent with the normal setback.
Correct, which is the uniform one thousand foot setback that was. Proposed and put on offer, and whether we agree with that, and then if that is the case, does that does council then agree with increasing that? From one thousand uniformly across the board?
So I would uh go back just to the reverse setback requirement of thousand, I wouldn't go to the scaling. I think we keep it like you guys proposed, I think when you're scaling it, it's just you we're getting into the weeds of. Um every well is gonna be in a different location and and I get that, so it might be different. But if we have a uniform one thousand reverse setback, it it's just it manages it easier. Um for staff and so I could go with a thousand setback, reverse setback and no scaling.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I agree, I'm okay with the thousand foot setback and uh I prefer no scaling for simplicity's sake.
Yeah, and Jason, um thank you, Director Jason, I agree, um. I would like to see it at at least two thousand, um or if we can meet in between it maybe fifteen hundred. Um possibly, but also I would like s- something like addressed where the floodplain areas are and then. Isn't there like a regulation or something that it should be like at least three to five miles setback from the arsenal property as well? Or is that coming up later?
So to answer some of those questions, the the arsenal, we didn't cover that in this presentation, so that would have to be an additional item that's brought up later. Um as it pertains to floodplains, there's currently a prohibition in the draft on developing oil and gas facility and floodplains. Um as it pertains to home construction, that's that's a whole other thing, but they're generally not allowed in floodplains without. Um significant remediation or revising the construction of a home above a floodplain, but. So yeah, the floodplain is a different issue and um covered adequately in the draft in terms of prohibition there.
Okay, thank you, because eventually I would like to said something to be s- addressed with. There is certain areas I believe that I'm aware of where it is um close to so many feet or miles from the arsenal. Tis I would like to see that addressed as well, and I do think we should have a standard um at least a thousand, you know, fifteen hundred. From start to finish just all around. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I would say as I've heard so far, general consensus with the question on the table about a uniform. Reverse setback during completions and drillings and also the production phase being one thousand feet. Is what I've heard so far from a majority of the body of council, just kind of make sure that that's not lost in all the the conversation discussion. Continuing on uh the remainder of council, where do you fall on that matter for us as staff, either to further refine? Or to move forward with our draft as as proposed?
No, I I I start a thousand and scale it back is my vote, a thousand feet is very far. And we are gonna have huge swaths of circles in our city uh of setback for the next thirty years, so. And and you you working on a well that's just waiting to be plugged, so no, that doesn't make uh doesn't make much sense to me.
I agree, um it's a reverse setback of a thousand, but it's gotta be scaled back uh throughout the. The phases of uh the life of the well.
I have a question.
Councilmember, oh yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So when we're talking about scale backs, how did, what is that, could you uh walk me through the process? Of how far do we keep scaling it back, at what point of time in the well? That's, how how does that happen?
It, if I might. Um what is proposed is that there's a thousand foot setback during. The drilling and completion and flowback operations. And as soon as that is completed, then, you know, and that's going to take even for um a well pad that has got more than twenty-four wells. That can be done within a year. Then it gets into the production phase where that pad shrinks, the amount of activity um diminishes. And particularly if you're using pipelines, it almost disappears, and at that point. Uh it would go to the reverse setbacks that you see in exhibit G, which is going to be one to ten wells will be a three hundred foot setback. Uh eleven to twenty-four would be four hundred and twenty-five or more would be five hundred foot setback, and that would. Exist and would remain the same for the life of that well, the full, as was mentioned earlier, thirty years that is an expected lifetime of these wells.
Okay, so could we go, could we change those from like one to ten to do five hundred and go up? Because the more wells, the more possibilities of accidents, um you know, just. Things might happen, I would be comfortable if one to ten would be five hundred. Eleven to twenty-four, seven fifty, twenty-five or more, which is a lot of wells, a thousand from residential. Because think about that, I mean, twenty-five, five hundred feet. Five hundred feet, but that's twenty-five or more wells, and a lot of things could happen, put people in danger if things happen. It might not never happen, and that hopefully that's the that's what we want, but I think a compromise to me. Instead of doing a thousand, which I would want regardless, but if if we're gonna. Maybe compromising and come to the middle with some of the council members is go up on the number. Of the setback, because three hundred for one, I mean, we gotta think of the safety and health, right? And I I believe working in the middle, one to ten, five hundred feet ain't bad, and it just goes up. So I mean, and I guess that's a question to my fellow colleagues that don't want to stick to a one thousand uh reverse setback. The consistent that want to do a scale back.
I mean. See, here here's the way that I see it is, we're running into the same situation that we've had here in Commerce City for a long time where. You have industrial right next to residential and all these competing land uses. That all you gotta do is come down to the core city and you can see. How these land uses are not compatible, and by reducing the setbacks, we're doing the same thing over again, so. These landlords need to decide, do you want residential, do you want a development? Then you should develop it, or do you want oil and gas, then it's your right to do so, but. I think, you know, for me, three hundred feet is is way too close, I I've driven out in uh. Thorne and Erie and, you know, when I go out to the track, you see. All these houses that are right next to wells and, you know, it's it's persons right if they want to build next to it, but it also. The optics of it do not look good, and so if we want. To uh make this a better city and make it a. Somewhere where people want to live and keep living, then we we do have to visit this, because uh. You know, I think what's his idea of making five hundred the minimum is a is a good idea, because. I mean, right now that is the minimum, so by doing this uh reverse setback, in essence, we're making it. Even less than the protections that people have right now, which I don't think that's okay, so maybe if we do. Five hundred for one to ten and then go up from there to six and seven hundred, that would make more sense to me.
But at what point are we just throwing out numbers and not and not taking into consideration what's actually providing a safe barrier? I mean, at at what point is the science behind us saying? Thousand feet, someone just pulled that right out of their, you know, back pocket and, oh, that sounds good.
Well, the COGCC had the science behind five hundred feet, which is why that was their original setback, so.
Is that the minimum at the state, though?
Yeah, that's the minimum at the state.
And how we set a law less than the state, like what, how would we even consider that, why is that even a discussion?
Because we're we're going by the theory that you can uh, you can't build a highway by a house, but you can build a house by a highway. So, I mean, to me, that's not fair to the people that you have moving in, right?
I am.
You know, I definitely think that there should be a disclosure.
So if if I may add, just obviously I'm hearing there's a a lot of good conversation that's going on going on amongst council members. I think maybe Dominic, Matt, if you can provide some some depth directions and guidance as it relates to what other jurisdictions are doing. But also what we've also seen and heard, what the state may be weighing in at with regards to reverse setbacks.
Yeah, so I can I can weigh in there, um and Matt, sir, if you want to jump in on the COGCC regulations. Um as proposed, I'll I'll kind of cover some other items, um but currently, the state does not have a reverse setback requirement at all. So given that you permitted oil and gas facility, um there can be. Um homes that are built within proximity to it beyond or within the five hundred foot normal setback that they have. Um other jurisdictions, there have been some other local jurisdictions that have implemented reverse setbacks. Um based on our our analysis of other jurisdictions, the the reverse setback generally ranges anywhere from two hundred and fifty feet to five hundred feet. Um Adams County has a two hundred foot reverse setback, or I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty foot reverse setback from new homes. Um to existing facilities, um and there are some other jurisdictions that have increased those. Uh Matt, I don't know if you want to weigh in, but my reading of the latest COGCC draft is that they're not proposing an additional reverse setback from. New homes.
That's correct, um and just to verify, I haven't, I don't know of any local jurisdiction that has a greater than five hundred foot. Reverse setback, um the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission believes that this is uh strictly in the hands of the local government, it's your decision. As to uh how far you would want to to have those reverse setbacks be, and again, you know, there's going to be an. Amount of acreage um based on that reverse setback that is not going to be used. Used or usable for residential uses at least uh for the foreseeable future around thirty years. At a thousand foot setback, you're looking at seventy-two acres. Um that, you know, wouldn't be able to be used for residential uses, certainly it could be put into other uses. Um but that, you know, is is certainly a consideration, and again, what we are basing our decision on in reverse setbacks is just the impacts. Uh there are far less impacts during production than there is during the the drilling and completion phase.
Well, I would like to, excuse me, I would like to say that during completions. Completions occur repeatedly, they don't happen just once, is that correct, Mr. Surra?
That's not correct, Ms. Noble.
You only do the fracking once?
Generally, you frac the wells one time, there.
So they, so during the thirty years, they don't come back and do it again?
They do, they do well maintenance work and work over work, uh refracs, uh that can happen, but generally. The biggest impact is one time during the completion phase of the well, that's the largest impact.
And a refrac wouldn't fall within our LDC, if we built inside the the thousand foot setback. You couldn't refrac it because now it would be against our land development code, so a refrac.
I don't think it works that way.
How, how's that not, now you can't come in and have the same drilling operation if you have, based off of what we're talking about here, a reverse setback, you go to. Two hundred and fifty feet, so the reason we are talking about this today is because on last council. We talked about aligning as closely as possible with Adams County, when Adams County did their LDCs. People were applauding, high-fiving, giving them pats on the back for how good they did at passing their LDCs. Is it because they did it fast or is because they liked their setbacks? To me, what it seemed like is they were happy with everything, so why would we not want to align with our closest neighbor to all of these? Seems to me why we came to this point in the first place to to get to the level we were is we were exceeding that of Adams County.
We are in a far different position, there is no other city in the entire state of Colorado that is facing the number of wells that are proposed for this area. That includes those that are at the edges and fracking into Commerce City as well as the applications that are already before the city, so we're much different.
And we still have to approve each, each one of them, we still have to approve every single project.
Yes, of course, we do have to approve every single project, but if you have a reverse setback, then that means they can't build right up to the wells.
So if I may, uh obviously there's a philosophical conversation happening around recompletions. I think Matt Sura can help to provide some, some philosophical information for, for council. Um then ultimately then getting back to the question at hand is with reverse setbacks with a uniform versus a reverse scaling, we've kind of gone, uh I'll say the full spectrum of looking at something in one standing universal form or allowing a reverse setback, but changing the numbers that are proposed with code, so I, I'll circle back to that, but Matt, sir, if you can weigh in and share what you wanna talk about with recompletions, which may help with furthering the, the decision.
Sure, I, I think that um council member Grimes uh stated it correctly, that it's really rare that you have recompletions, although when you talk to the oil and gas industry, they believe that, you know, eventually um they're gonna have technology that's going to allow them to come back in and do recompletions uh to these wells. And certainly that is a consideration, however, again, that recompletion is, is a matter of days um rather than years, uh and uh they have recompletion uh technology now, uh Quiet Fleet where they would not even violate uh a residential noise standard. So, uh again, you know, you're weighing um what the best use of, of the, all that land is, that if, if you're going to increase the setback, there's going to be an area that is not going to be allowed for residential uses for the foreseeable future of thirty years. We believe and the staff believes that and put forward a recommendation that we have this tiered level where it goes from three hundred to five hundred feet based on uh the number of wells and certainly put into that calculation was the possibility of refracking, and if you're refracking more than twenty four wells, you're gonna have to be five hundred feet, which is considerably farther than the three hundred feet.
Why was it stated a thousand feet earlier? That's what we were told at the beginning. Or, or a few minutes ago, as this conversation began. And I mentioned the scalability was um important to consider. I heard several of my colleagues say that they were okay with a thousand foot setbacks. Without scalability.
That brought us back to what it's currently at, not what it's suggested to be moved to. That's why we're talking about is because everybody was suggesting we move it to a thousand feet, that's a suggestion for a change, not what's currently there. So what's currently there is our exceeding of Adams County of where we're at on reverse setbacks, so where we were at last council was matching Adams County, except in a very few places we were going to exceed them. And we did so, that's where we were at and that's what we were trying to vote on, that's why we thought we had good LDC codes months ago. Because we exceeded what Adams County did.
I think that Oscar, excuse me, council member Madera made a really important argument when he was talking about what he views when he drives around and sees the compatibility issues between residential areas and industrial uses, and what is it that we want? Commerce City to be, we know that there is already Suncor in the south as well, which is a pretty heavy duty, intense use, that is not in Adams County, Adams County is not taking um a tough line on this, and we have residents who are faced with far more wells directly than they are on the COGCC map. We have far more residents who are impacted by this than they do in Adams County, because the wells in Adams County are being put in, in um areas that are further away from residential areas. But they were acting on their rules long before um one eighty one came into play and they approved them shortly after one eighty one. So they really didn't take into account what was occurring, even worse, all of the wells that were in their pipeline were already um, had already been approved and were moving through, so there was nothing that it was going to impact in their city. I just, I'm very concerned about these being placed too close to residences and people coming into areas who are going to be faced with this prospect. There is a state law regarding what goes into your um buying documents. That was just changed two years ago and that was as far as they could take it and that's to notify you that there is oil and gas perhaps planned for your area, but anything further than that, I don't know what we can do.
So that's why I think um I'd go back to compromise on the number of five hundred for one to ten. Um I think that's a safe enough barrier for, what'd you say Craig? You're on mute. Um I, I think uh, I think that's a, 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 a far enough number for our residential if we do decide to uh build there. Um hearing what a number of folks said, a thousand for a lifetime would be nice, but I don't think we're gonna get to that agreement, and I don't think it's fair also, um but I think five hundred and, and go up from there. Because we do have to take into consideration where we're gonna build new residential um properties up north. And, you know, these are decisions we're making for the future of Commerce City, right? And uh, and I think five hundred feet is still far enough, um and we go up, um we got plenty of land up there for them to develop. Uh do we wanna have that mix and do people wanna live in that mix? Uh at least that barrier of five hundred feet starting one to ten is far enough and it goes up. Again, that's how I look at it, uh I'd be willing to compromise that. Um because I think it's a fair compromise and I think it's far enough.
Oh, sorry, council member Grimes, I was gonna simply ask council member Bordeaux, is it fair enough for staff to put on the table for thumbs up, thumbs down? Obviously, looking at changing the numbers within the scale back to your five hundred and above with, is, is council in agreement with that compromise? As opposed to the earlier vote of the universal one thousand, regardless of phase? Keeping the scaled setback, but starting it from one to ten at five hundred and above. Is there a consensus thumbs up to that or no?
Not, not for me and uh council member Wario, I just wanna comment that uh what I wanna avoid is using arbitrary numbers and um I appreciate your the concern and, and looking at what numbers are appropriate and how can we kinda come to a middle ground on what makes sense for, for everybody? Uh but what I wanna avoid is arbitrary numbers and if, if three fifty is uh you know, consistent with other jurisdictions, you know, that's more than the county is proposing. Um there's no, there's no specific reason um to, to start it at five hundred. And so if there, if you have, you know, a compelling reason for that number specifically, I'd be more open to that conversation. Um but just to use arbitrary numbers, I, I can't support that.
My, my thing with that is I was, you know, I would go back to a thousand then of what they proposed before and the discussions we've had for the last two years. Um so I would look back to a thousand then, um and, you know, why staff threw that number out before all of this and the number of, huh?
It was a suggestion made in comment period, that's where the thousand came from.
Wasn't it before that or was it the comment period?
It was comment period that added the thousand foot suggestion.
So we've always had a thousand as it relates to the completion of drillings. But the suggestion that was received during the comment period was to take the scaled reverse setback and to make that universal with the completions and drillings one thousand foot setback. I would like to note that the land development code ordinance as drafted is you have the ability to kinda go back underneath, get underneath the hood and go through an inspection period.
Stay.
Go through an inspection period. Uh after the ordinance has been adopted and has been in place for a while, as we become a little bit more aware upon understanding how it's been applied, some of the things that we may not have seen as issues that may come to light that we may want to proactively change, cuz to all of the good conversation around the table that I'm hearing is we're trying to address and trying to solve a number of different scenarios that may or may not come to light. Um and I'm explaining that and I, and I agree that we need to be thoughtful in our approach to that, but we really won't know until we actually have the ordinance in place and actually apply it to see where we actually have some of those problems. Um I do wanna just make note that there is always still the opportunity for us if we as staff or as council or as the community, both who are living within it or next to or obviously are developing, are starting to fail some of these pinch points, we can always be able to bring it forward for us and once again abide, revise accordingly.
Can I give a final perspective on this? So this is what I don't want to happen. Um but land is purchased at two separate levels, if you're buying mineral rights at the same time, you have two expect, you have two separate expectations on what happens above ground and below ground when you purchase that land. Depending on the price of, of a barrel of gas, a barrel of oil, you can make a ton more money drilling for oil than you could selling to a residential home builder. So the land we're talking about is not ours, we don't, we don't control that right now. All the person who, who has that land in, in their ownership right now has to do is say, cool, we're not gonna annex anymore, we're not gonna let you develop houses and residential or businesses out here, because I'm gonna use my right to drill this land and make more money that way. This was my, this is what I was depending on my retirement or my kid's future, whatever. That's their right at that point, they now don't have to sell to Oakwood Homes or whoever else Legato or whoever else wants to build, build out there and develop. Because they're gonna be losing money by making that decision where they could potentially just say, screw it, this whole east side Commerce City, we're gonna take our land and we're gonna drill with inside the LDCs and we're never going to develop out here because there's thousand foot setbacks and we're gonna have, we might as well grow corn in that big circle, you know, it's same type of thing like there, we're not talking about land that's ours, w- we are talking about land that we plan to annex. We plan to build and develop after it's sold to a developer, like right now, we don't have we have a plan that will get flipped completely upside, upside its head if someone right in the middle decides, oh, we're not gonna sell that piece, cuz we'd rather drill in the middle that have thousand foot setbacks all the way around, and we're not gonna develop anything in that area. Now we have a big old splotch in the middle of our city that is an oil well site instead of a development, and so I don't want that to happen, I'm just telling you if I'm looking at property as an investment and I look at it at two levels, cuz I own the mineral rights on underneath the land on top, I have two different expectations of how I'm gonna make money off that land, ones underneath the ground and ones above. And if, and if the math doesn't work where I can make money off both because of the LDCs, okay. Now I have to decide which one's gonna make me more money. I don't know the exact number of what uh, a price of a barrel of oil needs to hit, but at certain point, and we've seen it in the very recent past, it makes a lot more sense to drill than it does to sell to a developer and build houses.
Uh and I appreciate that, but we're also in the business of providing the safety for our future residents as council. And, and both, right? And, and so, excuse me? I, I didn't hear you.
First day, in that conversation, we don't have residents to protect, because you're not.
We will, but we will, so, w- w- so when those happen, we're gonna send them your email. You know, and that's why I'm saying, let's find a compromise, a, a, a middle ground where we could have both, not just one sided. Um so. Go ahead.
When we're on the hook, when we're on the hook, the city's on the hook for all this money that we're spending in general improvement districts because nobody will develop in these areas anymore. Then we're gonna have to send them your guys' email, because we're gonna be on the hook for the thirteen point six million dollars we just spent going.
And I'm fine with that, because you know what, I, I'd rather tell somebody, you know what, we did five hundred feet because X amount of wells are there and accident, accidents could happen, and I looked after your safety and I tried to compromise, but my other colleague didn't, he was thinking about the investment, because he wasn't thinking about this, so that's what I'm trying to say, Craig, you know.
I make nothing of this.
We have to come to a middle ground as a, as a, as a, as a council of what we want the future. Now, you have your opinion, I have mine, at the end of the day, we are all gonna vote on this. Some vote no, some vote yes.
Jose, I'm just trying to tell you, there's.
And I'm listening to you, but you're not listening. That's all I'm saying, is how do we come to a middle ground, how do we come to a middle ground to get past this?
If, if I may offer, a lot of good conversation. I'd like to table this topic and come back to it. We've got a number of other topics, obviously, we wanna be able to hit tonight, we may not hit them all, but like I said, we've got some notes, we'll come back to this item, but I would like to think we can move on to the next one and kinda keep the conversation going with getting some direction from council, but let's get, we're just gonna push this topic to the, to the side for the time being and kinda talk about air quality monitor.
Alright, so there was a council member that requested discussion on the proposed changes on the air monitoring requirements. Um so as you recall from a June eight study session, there were some proposed language changes regarding air quality monitoring. Um so this, there were some, four requests in here, so recommendation to continuous air monitoring through the life of the site. Recommend retaining original draft language, in such instances, continuous monitoring shall be required. Um recommend requiring specific timeline for collecting air samples, and then additional language regarding um uh requiring air monitoring equipment that continuously monitors the air quality at the operator's expense. So to provide a little bit of background on this topic, so there were various concerns that were raised during the public comment period. Um basically saying that the language is, is readied and interpreted specifically as it was written is that um, it was unclear whether or not all pollutants that were listed, so there were a specific or a significant amount of um air pollutants, including volatile organic compounds, benzene. Um just very, very broad language on what needed to be monitored. And essentially saying that that technology may or may not be present within the current state and time to be, be able to conduct that continuous monitoring and as staff has proposed, this language is intended to essentially act as a stopgap measure until the Air Quality Control Commission takes on potentially more stringent air quality monitoring requirements. They may or may not eventually adopt stringent air quality monitoring requirements, but based on monitoring of where that stakeholder, the stakeholder groups in that language has been is that the, the draft as proposed, as currently proposed is generally aligned with where that uh continuous monitoring is going to be in place. Um so some clarity and flexibility on this provision is needed to ensure that the city is able to require some quality, air quality monitoring in that time period. Uh but to not unreasonably require that certain technologies that don't exist at this point in time couldn't be monitored. Um so this is just a brief overview of what the proposed changes were on June eighth. Um so basically saying that the operator shall create a standard air monitoring plan describing how the operator will conduct baseline monitoring prior to construction of the wall site. So the plan would describe how the operator will conduct continuous monitoring and collect periodic, periodic canister samples. And then air pollutants monitors by canister, canister sample should include methane VOCs, hazardous air pollutants, oxides of nitrogen, particulate matter and fine particulate matter. Um and then continuous monitoring may not cease until three years have passed from the date of the last well drilled and may be required until all wells are plugged and abandoned. And then in the event a can, canister sample is triggered, um the city shall be notified on the next business day after the occurrence of such event, and then depending on the circumstances, expedited lab analysis may be required. So with this proposed language here, does council feel that this topic is adequately addressed in the latest draft? Or does not? So in, in terms of having and facilitating the discussion, if we can get to a point where we have a thumbs up for A or a thumbs down for B, um from all nine of you, so we can get direction on whether or not to um have additional discussion on what additional language might be.
I'm a thumbs up for A. Me too.
Do you go back one more slide? Sorry, I don't have it up on my other computer screen.
Me three. Um I am wondering at one point, uh the technical review process could be brought in, is there any need for a technical review process?
As it relates to specifically air quality monitoring. As it relates to specifically air quality monitoring or. So the technical review process that could occur. And ideally the way that we talked about this and discussed in the latest draft is that. The operator would be required to provide the air quality monitoring services. Um, from essentially a list of city approved air quality vendors. And obviously they would need to provide that plan to the city in their review and demonstrate that they're able to do. What they're saying that they're doing in their permit and showing compliance with our regulations. So that would occur at that time.
And there is a technical review process at the COGCC also?
Okay. And I'm, are you saying that that would occur simultaneously? And Matt, sir, I know that this. COGCC Technical Review Board was something that. Is being contemplated. Do you want to weigh in a little bit more on that?
Sure. Um, it's not currently anything that um, has been proposed. It is uh, required in Senate Bill one eighty-one, but uh, currently they uh, don't have a draft that would uh, provide for a technical review board. Uh, our proposed code revisions do allow for. Uh, the city staff to hire any needed outside consultants, third party consultants and have those. Uh, that the cost of those provided by the operator or applicant.
Thank you.
I had a question. Yeah, I had a question. Is there any? Or will this come up later? Any um, information once the well is plugged and abandoned? Who's going to continuously monitor? The safety and you know, for the environment? Well, there, who's going to be monitoring that once a well is plugged?
Councilor Alan Thomas, that is actually on the next topic. So um, we do have a specific uh, item discussing that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So I, I don't think this goes far enough. I don't like number two, the fact that after three years they can just quit monitoring. I think as long as we are, uh, that well is there, it should always be monitored. And so I'd like to see that changed to where that three year exemption is not there. And then also I don't like the fact that we have to wait until the next business day in order to find out about the occurrence of such an event. If this pops off at two o'clock in the afternoon on Friday and it's a three day weekend and we're going to go four days where we had a. Situation take place that we didn't know about. So any kind of uh, um, triggering within the canister sample. Should take place with notification within an hour.
I agree with council, with Mayor Huesman. Thank you, Mayor. Excellent ideas.
And then I got one too. Um. So. To me, it seems the, the most, the most, the best way to approach this is to have. A certified third party that has nothing to do, obviously paid for by the. By the driller or the um, extractor. Seems to me that a third party, you know, qualification to show that, you know, you, you, you have no way. Financial attachment to the um, operator and then. It allows for, uh, and I also want to know if, if our LDC proposal allows for. Increased air monitoring as um, technology gets better, because one of the things I'm seeing is that. I had a hard time with, with putting in uh, continuous air monitoring. Systems into our LDCs because I had never been shown. A system that, that kind of fit that, that guidance, right? And so we're, we're asking somebody to provide. Science that didn't exist at the time or was unproven. I think we're well on our way to having proven science in some of these uh, monitoring systems, but you know. Can those other requirements adaptable to improve as this monitoring? Um, technology gets better because. You guys heard my last arguments. That does not mean I'm not in a hundred, a hundred percent support of. Monitoring what's going on at the site and being very quick to respond to any incident. Um, one of the things that I know you can have, uh, you know, an escape of VOCs is, is a very simple mistake of leaving the cap off. Uh, of, of, of align while doing some maintenance and. When do you find out about that? You know, as, as Mayor Huesman was saying. Is there, you know, the city, the company should be getting an alert immediately and you know. Their employee left the job site at two and is going on his three day camping trip. Um, we'll get to it Tuesday when we get back. Isn't really an acceptable answer, I don't think for any of us. Um, you know, so as technology improves and we can. Detect VOC escape or what, whatever is in there, you know, pollutants in there. We need to, you know, be reassured in our LDCs that there are. Um, actions to be set in place that happen immediately and the penalties uh, for not reporting or not responding in a timely manner. That, that seems to me as long, you know, as the technology improves, we should absolutely require that.
So, so Matt, sir. Given, what do you understand what's happening with air quality monitoring at the state level of? A number of, number of different initiatives and efforts that help to guide what we proposed and brought forward to, to council?
Sure. So uh, Senate Bill one eighty-one. The legislation that was passed last year that gave local governments um, much greater authority to regulate the oil and gas industry. Also required that the Air Quality Control Commission under the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Look at continuous monitoring specifically near homes and some of the larger facilities. And they are just starting that process. Uh, there's going to be a rulemaking that is happening in September, late September. And they're looking at only applying that continuous monitoring requirement to pre-production. So that's during the drilling completion and what they proposed is the first six months. Of, of production. Uh, and that's where they have the, the most surge of production. Uh, and things can go wrong. They've got the, the greatest volumes and the greatest pressures at that time. We thought that, that it needed to be much longer than that. Uh, three years was uh, enough time for that well typically to um. And within three years' time, it produces about seventy-five percent of what that well is going to produce over the lifetime of the well. Uh, which is going to be thirty years. So the, the production just kind of falls off a cliff after about three years. And so that's why we chose three years. Uh, it was based on um, that production, those production numbers.
So back to that, um, obviously we heard. A recommended change from the mayor as it related to uh, language. Does the, is there a consensus by council thumbs up? To that change or to continue still with the proposed language as we have in the March ten and June eighth revisions?
I prefer the language as it's written in the revisions now. Um, I would be open to a quicker turnaround than one business day. Uh, where uh, a problem exists. However, I think one hour is. Depending on the technology available, um, I think that that's setting, setting up. A failure uh, in terms of the communication.
Again, I support the mayor regarding uh, lifetime. And also quick turnaround. Um, I myself have encountered the problem with emissions. On a site on a hundred and thirty-sixth. In Adams County and when I called in the emissions problem, it was after five o'clock. So at five o'clock, they would be gone. So it's not just weekends, it's also uh, the time of day. So somehow there needs to be a way to trigger. Notification and um. Business hours Monday through Friday. Uh, don't really cut it. So whatever can be the quickest way, if it's an hour, that works for me and also to do it. Continuously for the well's lifetime. We're looking at a lot of wells surrounding residential area.
I would support language that uh, says something to the effect of. Um, as soon as possible and no longer than, and put a, a cap on how long they have to report.
What is the remainder of uh, other council member thoughts?
Hey, Mr. Roger, uh, Director Rogers. So a lifetime, who, what if that company is no longer? Who, who pays for that? Who monitors or that? Like, how, how does that work?
Good question. Matt, sir, Dominic, do you want to weigh in with the technical details of that, with that respect?
Sure, Dominic, um, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. So. Uh, there is going to be an ongoing requirement regardless of the ownership of the well. Um, when these are uh, approved, if they are approved by city council, uh, they are going to have to. Comply with uh, the code as it was written at the time. Uh, for uh, the lifetime of that well, regardless of, of how many times that changes ownership. And the requirements that, that um, we're discussing here uh, would apply regardless.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say. Go for it.
Sorry, I couldn't wait. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think one hour if the technology's not there is just uh. Yeah, I, I would say as soon as possible. Um. Because I think the mayor is right. I mean, if it's Friday night and something happens, we're not going to hear it till Monday. Um, and that gives them kind of, hey, something happened on Friday night. We got to. Notify the city within the next uh, day, whether it's business day. Or not, uh, because I think people, I mean. Cell phones and everything. So I would, I would, I, I don't think in, within the hour, but I definitely say within the next day or as soon as possible. The three year, uh, I think if we have the capability of doing a lifetime to. Uh, especially if there's residentials around, we could do that. But I just don't know enough if. What if that company goes bankrupt? Like what happens? Do we take over it or? You know, that's my big concern on doing a lifetime.
Like. Councilmember Guardiola, as it pertains to plugging and abandonment, or I'm sorry, um. Basically abandonment of a well. So let's say that there's some sort of uh, financial setback and an operator goes under. And they have existing wells that are in production. Um, we do have the reclamation bond requirement. Um, and then additional financial assurances. So in the instance that. The operator is, is no longer present, um, the eighty-six thousand dollars per well. Uh, site would be applied to plug and abandon the well. So you, you wouldn't need the, the monitoring from that point on. Um, we'll, we'll get into that in another topic, but yeah, it's basically saying that once that occurs and there's no one else to come in. Continue production or plug and abandon well. That's where the money comes into it to address that.
Okay.
I would just add to that if, if you don't mind, um. It's unlikely that if an operator goes bankrupt, there wouldn't be another operator purchasing. The wells that already exist, um, if they're still economically viable. So um. That's kind of part of the transferability conversation, um. And why it's important because we want another operator to be able to take over and assume the liability. Um, and maintain, you know, maintenance and operations if the, the current operator ceases to exist.
And Dominic, correct me if I'm not wrong, uh, in regards to notification alert systems. Uh, we do have a topic on that. Obviously we did identify that there's an opportunity within. Our best management practices that we can define on a case by case basis on type of technology that is available. Type of technology that, that uh, surface operator wants to utilize for us to. Uh, once again, create a system that will allow for heightened communication. And awareness for not only city staff, but also the community. Is, is that not correct?
So yeah, we do address that in a different slide. So that's, that's farther along in the presentation.
I had a question I was gonna ask also, is there? Like some kind of way it can be added that there's continuous air monitoring twenty-four seven?
And that, that's sort of what this conversation is along the lines of. Um, so as it was read in the previous draft. Um, continuous monitoring would be required for methane VOCs. Hazardous air pollutants, oxides or oxide of nitrogen, particulate matter and fine particulate matter. And the feedback that we got, and this kind of goes back to Councilmember Hurst's conversation about. Um, technology increasing over time. Um, I think what we're trying to do here is be. Open and understanding that the technologies that's in place now isn't going to be the technology that's in place 10 years from now. And accounting for that, but as it reads today. Continuous monitoring of methane is um, significantly cost prohibitive and. Essentially not technologically feasible. And as we talk about continuous. What is, what is the interval for continuous? Is that every minute? Is that every hour? Is that? Every twenty-four, twenty-four hours? So that, those are all considerations to, to kind of think about as it. Gets into play. So what we were looking at. And, and given that there's other emerging technologies and this is by no means something that has been. In place technology wise for five years and. Um, has been occurring regularly. There's, there's varying scales. There's varying levels of continuous. Um, where the recommendation that we brought forth was essentially whatever. Air quality monitoring vendor that you select, which is essentially a third party, a third party monitoring company. That was pre-vetted by the city to ensure that it meets these basic requirements. Show us what you're monitoring. If for instance, if you. Are able to determine through your permit process that. This site might have more specific concerns with one airport, air pollutant than another, it might make sense to dedicate those resources towards. More refined continuous monitoring for that specific. Um, type of pollutant versus another. So that's where that all comes into play. Um. Requiring continuous monitoring for all of these technologies, um, based on the conversations that we've had. Is not possible at the moment. And Matt, I don't know if you want to weigh in anymore with that, but that's. That's where some of the language changes that were proposed for one. Um, regarding number two and three, I think certainly. It's, it's absolutely possible and feasible to. Face a lesser restriction or a more of a restriction of within an hour to reporting canister sample triggers. Um, the moment that that's conducted, there should be some sort of alert system that, that makes sure that that can happen immediately and provide that communication to the public. Um, and then. There's a continuing discussion with you all about whether or not. Continuous monitoring should occur for the lifetime of the well or should be capped at three years.
But from what I'm saying, so it sounds like it's possible, but yet you, you mentioned it's cost effective. So. That's one reason I real concerned about the way the wording in this is because I think at all costs, no matter what the cost. It's really important to protect the residents and the safety of the environment to have some type of continuous um. Monitoring because you mentioned it's not cost effective. Well, I think. People's lives and the environment needs to seriously be considered. You know, for this also, you know, when you said it's cost effective. You know, it still needs to be looked into ways where we can have some type of monitoring. To, at least, you know, twenty-four seven, you know, and that's how I feel about it.
The, the staff absolutely agreed with that. And that's why the requirement under uh. Romanet number two here, uh, continuous monitoring will be uh, required for first three years unless. There's any use defined in, in this twenty-one dash fifty-two sixty-six six A. Uh, is within a thousand feet and you know, all those uses are anything from uh. You know, a public water supply well, senior living assist, you know, uh, facility, public park, any home. So if there's any of those uses within a thousand feet, we are requiring continuous monitoring for the life of the well. Uh, it was thought that uh, beyond a thousand feet, if they find a, a, a really, you know. Good location that's a two thousand feet away from the closest home, uh, that there should be um, some relief from that. Uh, again, they are going to have to continuous monitor for the first three years, um, but not have that requirement for the life of the well.
Thank you very much. Um, I agree with the council member Alan Thomas. And I think one thing that's really important. And that I have talked about for a long time is that none of these decisions can be made in isolation. We're not talking about one pad or one site that will need air monitoring, but several. That will be surrounding our neighborhoods. So to just stop. Um, at the three year period when the cumulative impact of. The emissions from these sites may have, may be of critical importance. To the health and safety of our residents is something that is important to consider. And it's something that I think is quite different than some of the other communities are having to deal with because we have so many more. Um, Broomfield is only talking about by comparison eighty. Eighty wells. At this point, while we know for a fact because of the applications that have come in, we're looking at over a hundred and fifty. And that doesn't include some of the other ones that don't have applications in, nor does it include the ones that are just across the border that are impacting us as well. So I think anything extra we can do on behalf of our residents is especially critical. Since it appears that they will be asked to carry a far greater burden than other areas are asked to carry.
So to that point, if I may, very quickly, Matt Sur. What I heard are obviously a a number of different ideas or thoughts. To simply kind of bring it back to to the question at hand. I think more simplis- simpli- more simplistically for staff, given that there's obviously a complexity around air quality that we are trying to. I'll say build a framework around where there's not a very strong. Or a very well laid out guidelines or standards from the state to create a baseline for us to build upon. Is my question to you all. Is this a thumbs up for us to look at further refinement and to bring back what? Has been said to us to kind of take a look at again.
Can I add one thing? Just to talk about the hours, you know, in every other situation that I know of. Fuel, transport, everything, we have. Emergency response plans that are absolutely necessary before you can get any permit. So, you know, when the mayor says. One day is too long. I I happen to agree. I I think. I'd propose something between three and nine hours, meaning. I don't need you to get the warning, call nine one one and then stop what you're doing. And send a message to to Commerce City. I need you to handle the situation and in that moment have a process by which your emergency response team. Starts a communication process. So. I I still think it's under, it's under an eight, you know, under twenty four hours, absolutely. And I would propose something between three and nine hours. There's. Plenty of industry like industries that follow similar guidelines. That I'm sure they kicked and screamed when those guidelines went into place, but they adapted their operation and made it happen. And I think as we talk about continuous air monitoring, it's not perfect. I think some of the, you know, cost prohibitive discussion is about. There's little competition that is at that level yet. And so you're basically. Forced to buy one type of product and it's extremely expensive. But in five years from now, there are sensors that are being created today that will make that extremely cost efficient. And won't be an issue, you know, and and of course, I'm making assumptions that 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 science and technology progresses as it should. But that's where I was getting at is our adaptability, you know. I I shy away from saying best practices because who who determines that best practice in air quality? You know, one thing I don't want us to see is. We say, okay. Operator signs a three year contract with this air monitoring company. But their their technology is immediately, you know, three months later. Not worth, you know, it's not worthy anymore. There's way better stuff out there. I don't want to see. Us back ourselves into that kind of situation where we're not continually asking operators to adapt as this technology improves. Obviously, there needs to be some type of incentive to continue to to invest in that type of infrastructure. And I'm not saying financial incentive from us. But we need to make it so it makes sense. And and I think asking for an emergency response plan. Inside of the twenty four hour mark. Is a must in in from my point of view.
Councilmember Hurst. Would you consider? Asking the same of the oil and gas operators that we would ask of Suncor refinery when it comes to notification of. Emissions?
It seems, yeah, I I absolutely, I think on both sides, you know, from Suncor's point of view, they we we. Harp on them about communicating with the community that. You know, that they affect in their area. At the very least, right? Like, we're asking them, you know, we understand we don't have very much. Legal authority in that discussion, but we're asking them to be good corporate neighbors. That that's where I've always stood on that is. Yeah, we don't have the authority, but. We're just asking you to be a good corporate neighbor. And I think we have the opportunity to demand a good corporate neighbor. By law in this situation because we do have the authority to ask for that. And so. To me, yes, I I think we need to have a reporting. Line by line, the same way they do with Suncor. I don't know if we can demand that, but we can do something similar to our expectations that we'd like to see Suncor move to.
One of the things I would like to offer and to share, you know, when we're drafting land development code requirements and standards. There is a certain level of detail that, yes, we will expound upon, but then there's also a certain level that. We will look at certain policy based approaches, certain level of things and items that will come as part of our review and our analysis. So some of the conversation that I'm hearing here, kind of focusing on where the land development code is. Is that there needs to be some level of language as it relates to communications, notifications. And certain parameters for us to be able to evaluate. And ultimately, it needs to be able to bring before mayor and city council, depending upon philosophical conversation. Of admin versus judicial hearing process. To be able to make that determination of whether it meets the expectation. Because once again, going back to having heard from Matt Sur and Dominic. Trying to evaluate a consensus on continuous monitoring. For each well site is difficult based on the application of technology applied. And what's the baseline of how we establish that methodological approach? To assure consistency across the various wells that we are evaluating citywide. Right now, we only have one application as it relates to wells coming in for evaluation within the city. That's extraction oil and gas. But there's nothing saying that Great Western, Anadarko, Pet- Petro. Couldn't also come forward, but may use different strategies and application of technology. So that this still gives you all the flexibility. For us to go through that evaluation, to present that to you, to determine what's the most appropriate. Expectation in place. But ultimately as well for us to kind of, what I'm hearing is for us to go back and to make sure that we have covered that from the high level. Philosophical policy basis into an actual standard and requirement for your consideration. So I think kind of going back to that, what I've heard across the board from council is. There's more that we need to further define. For notification and communication as it relates to air quality monitoring and how to look at that. And to further expound upon that within our draft. Is that a fair consensus as to our next steps?
Yes, sir, I think so.
Sounds good. Let's go.
That being said, Mayor, just with respect to time, I know it is eight o'clock. I do know in the agenda, we had called that. That our session would be done at seven forty five. Obviously, we're willing to continue the conversation, but just wanted to make note of that for councils. Consideration, knowing that you do have a special meeting behind this as well.
Is it possible to break this into a couple of sessions that even if they happen this week? Not to, I'm not trying to suggest that to string it out for several more study sessions is my point. Could we have another one this week to finish up?
I'm looking to city attorney, Robert Cheezy and or Matt Hader about that approach and obviously notification.
So we we can do that. The notification requirement, I believe, is only twenty four hours. We just got to get it out there in advance to make sure that that's that's put on the webpage. This is special meeting, though. It's not normally scheduled. And I don't know if if I'd have to look real quick. I don't think that that would make a difference. And of course, we're not taking action. This is just a study session. So that's helpful as well. So I I think we can do that without a problem.
Thank you, Matt.
I would just add, I think there's a question of availability for the other council members. Ms. Alan Thomas, I believe, had to leave the meeting. Having a twenty four hour notice, noticed posted period. Would be preferable, even if we could just adjourn this meeting. But I think all council members would want to. Consent to that and then. Mayor would call a special meeting for that night. But there is a matter of is everybody available? Is staff available? To do this and work through this throughout the week.
I I I think to piggyback on this. Let's find a time we can do this, but let's make it sooner than later. I think this is such an important topic. We'd be doing a dis- if you guys want to move on to the next topic, we'd be doing a disservice. Even if we work well into the night tonight, we're going to be doing a disservice to the special meeting. Or or if we come back to this topic, you know, all of us. At some point, we'll be tired and need to have fresh minds to have this discussion continue. So. You know, with what what, you know, considering what city staff has to go through and every all other eight. City or city council members have to go through, I would be willing. To schedule that without having a date and a time and try to find something that works. In the near future, so we can have these detailed discussions because. I actually think this is the best way to do it is on TV. Recorded and we can continue to come back to this if needed.
I agree with Councilmember Hurst. I think it's really important. Unfortunately, we not only have a special meeting that was scheduled. On this study session, but also an executive session. I think that this is such a critical issue. It will affect. What Commerce City is and becomes. For its lifetime. So. There are way too many important topics still left. In this slide presentation to tackle. And among the council comments that were recorded and the staff suggestions. For us to give this short shrift is far too important. I'm happy to come back and do it so long as we're only doing this topic. And we don't try to add in another topic at the same time.
Another meeting. We're only about a quarter of the way through this. I would. Like to push through. You know, for at least another hour if we can and then. You know, we can go into the special meeting after that. And then we're obviously going to have to revisit this, but. I mean, we barely began to scratch the surface on this.
Yeah, and I think the availability. I would have to, I'm leaving up to the mountains. And I'll come back on Monday for a meeting, but I don't know any other day. I mean. So I would prefer to push through as much as we can tonight. I mean, our normal council meetings don't end till twelve the last five weeks. Not saying that we should do that tonight, but I think we could push through a little bit more and then do our special meeting.
Dominic, on to the next topic.
Right? So. We actually kind of covered this in the last one, but there was some discussion regarding a better understanding for the vendor selection process. I think with this one, since we did cover it a little bit more, I'll just give a brief rundown and overview of this again. And if there are any other additional questions and discussions, we can, we can have that. Or if we feel we want to move on to the next one, we can. But basically. The way that this will work and and Councilmember Hurst sort of mentioned this. So. So let's say that you're applying for a permit. As an oil and gas operator. You would need to. Select one of the city approved vendors. So basically, what would have to happen is the city would go undergo an RFQ process. Which would be in compliance with our current procurement guides. So this is the exact same process that we have in place for a traffic study. So if a developer wants to. Develop a commercial business, they have a list of approved vendors that they select from for a traffic study. And basically, you would do the same for air quality monitoring. So you would have potentially anywhere between three and seven. Air quality monitoring companies that are selected under this process. Where the operator would choose from that list and it's it's a third party. It's not affiliated with the city. Or specifically with an operator, but would be pre-vetted to essentially make sure that they're able to meet those requirements. That would ensure transparency and consistency of documentation. So. Basically saying that number one, they meet the requirements. Number two, there's clear and consistent data and documentation. So. The language is the same in terms of the information that's being provided to the city and it doesn't differ between different operators. And that's essentially what that is. So. Do we feel that that is an appropriate process? Is there additional discussion needed? Or do we want to move on to the next topic?
Dominic, thank you for the clarification on how the vendor selection will work. As it's currently written, the one thing I would ask council to consider is an addition that allows for. An operator to bring forth a company that. May not be on the list, but could be considered through the city's procurement RFQ process to be added to the list.
I see no need to add that to the list. I think that what you've put together is perfectly suitable. And we don't need the operator bringing in their pet monitoring company.
I think it's critical because as technology advances, I don't think we have someone in the city. Monitoring updates in technology. And if an operator comes to us and says. We have found someone who does this better, cheaper, faster. You know, more efficient recording tools, more efficient monitoring. I don't know why we wouldn't consider. Improving the list.
I don't think as written, this would. Prohibit improving the list. I see where the mayor's saying that the. If even in appearance, right, having the. The operator self-select the vendor and bring it forth. Could be. Look like there's a compromise of independence there. So rather than that, I would just. For city to. Continuously monitor technology in the space and. Add vendors as necessary. Maybe like on an annual basis or something.
All right, any other, any other thoughts? Just a quick thumbs up, A or B? Or any other thoughts or discussion?
With this list, I mean. They could still go through the process, right? If a a new company wants to be on this list, right?
Matt, I'm not too sure of the procurement process. Would you be able to, Matt Hader, weigh in on how that would work if there was another operator that was contemplated?
I'd like to jump in if I could, just to ask under the draft. And I believe this is. It just says city approved vendor in the LDC, correct, Dominic? It 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 doesn't talk about this RFQ process. That's just the plan. The city's procurement process. Allows for a variety of waivers and sole sources. So I think the flexibility is in there if there is an honestly. Good cause standard. I don't believe that the code. As it's currently being proposed or the procurement policy would stop that. The RFQ process is not actually contemplated really in the procurement policy. It's. It is an option that's available, but because the RFQ doesn't actually enter, create a contract. The the city expenditure or fund standards that would apply under the procurement policy wouldn't apply. So I. I think there is flexibility in the language as I see it right now to accomplish both. And there's not some sort of guardrail that would. Prevent what Ms. Grimes suggested in the appropriate situation.
Yeah, my thing is as long as it's it's the same for every vendor, the process, I I think that's fair. So if they do have someone, they could let them know, hey, go through the Commerce City permit process to get on the vendors list. So I'm I'm all right with this.
Yeah, that makes sense because as the city would undergo an RFQ process to develop a list of city approved vendors. I would assume that the city. On an ongoing basis. Can. Do RFQs in the future in case they need to change or update their list. But I don't think that it should be about. Just knocking on someone's door and saying this is, this is a better option. There should be a process.
Absolutely, absolutely agree.
I think that also gives us the opportunity to talk about the flexibility and and our standards for air quality monitoring, the RFQ process. Which does kind of push this. Item down the road because we're going to have to continuously talk about what are the standards? That you'll have to meet in this RFQ process. But that allows us to increase, you know, our standards with technology improvements as they come.
So hearing that it sounds though we have a consensus as it relates.
So hearing that, it sounds though we have a consensus as it relates to language as proposed. So that being said, I think we've covered this topic.
Alright, and we'll move on to the, the next one in that, that scenario then. Um, so plugged and abandoned well monitoring, um. I believe uh. Councilmember Alan Tal- or Thomas was the one that requested this discussion and I believe she's. No longer on the call, but we can continue with it. So there was a discussion of ongoing monitoring and plug and abandon well sites. Um, there's currently no proposed requirement for air quality monitoring for plugged and abandoned well site. Um, generally speaking, in Matt's, or um, if you can weigh in a little bit more after I go through this. Um, is that generally if. A well has been plugged and abandoned properly. So if they received a G O C C or C O D C C Form Six. Showing how they intend to plug and abandon the well. And they get approval to do that, and then they go in and get the work done. And then there's an approval of that. Um. Ideally, there shouldn't be any future emissions present. Uh, monitoring will be costly or will be costly and, and essentially undefined on into the future from that point. And harder administer once an operator is no longer in the picture. So once you actually plug and abandon the well. The operator's done in place, reclamation's. Is, is in place. You would have them monitor, but. Wouldn't be monitoring anything unless that well wasn't properly plugged and abandoned. And that cost burden could potentially fall on the city. Um, there has been some noting of methane gas leakage in older wells that may not have gone through rigorous. Um, proper plugging and abandoning procedures and standards. In that case, um, the way that. The city is evaluating kind of closing that gap. And this. Ideally, wouldn't apply to new facilities that are properly plugged and abandoned in accordance with C O G C standards. As you would have a city, citywide inspector who, in addition to responding to. Any complaints on active oil and gas well sites. Potentially going and looking at older wells. Um, that could be potentially a function of a city employee in the future and would occur at the state level in some regard. And Matt, if there's anything else that you want to add in that might not have been covered on that front, um, feel free.
Sure, uh. Just to give. A little bit more background, um, there are a number of monitoring technologies that can be employed. You know, this continuous monitoring is kind of a, a new area, but um, the current monitoring that is required. Is use of a FLIR camera, a forward-looking infrared camera typically, or, or EPA method twenty-one, or this is more of a sniffer. That is uh, employed monthly at some of these facilities. And then as the facility starts um, producing less and less, the requirements go from monthly to quarterly to uh. Biannually. Um. These requirements of, of going to one of those locations with a forward-looking infrared camera. Don't end when the oil and gas well is plugged and abandoned. Particularly if it is one of those, those older wells that has been plugged and abandoned and there's new development that is occurring. Underneath that well, uh, they can go and ha- have a requirement uh, in their offset program to ensure that that well was. Plugged and abandoned properly and, and they can do that through the use of a FLIR camera or also um, take a soil gas sample. Um, so. You know, these, these facilities are going to be uh, continually checked and, and evaluated. And certainly if new development occurs. Uh, those older wells will be reevaluated at that time.
So regarding discussion of that, so A, do we feel that as a council, this topic that we address? Um, is there additional language that you would want to see with that? So just a quick. Um, yes or no, A or B? Thumbs up or thumbs down? As to whether or not there needs to be additional um, eyes on this particular topic?
What's critical in Commerce City is that we actually have monitoring stations. Uh, we only have monitoring stations that are down by Sun Court Refinery. So without a. Monitoring station in the rest of Commerce City, we really have no way of being able to tell what um. What air quality is occurring in this area. Uh, we do have quite a few. Abandoned wells, plugged, plugged wells as well. So uh, but we have no way of knowing. What impact they're having because the EPA hasn't put any stations. In the north part of Commerce City. So we do need to resolve this issue in some fashion. I hope. That uh, we as a council can agree that that's really critical, that that needs to um, occur sooner than later.
And one I didn't add there, Councilmember Noble, um. And my understanding of this is Matt Sura was discussing the, the FLIR cameras as well. So that's a way that you could potentially detect a leak or see that there's something occurring on site. Um, the larger monitors that you're, you're talking about are certainly needed and necessary. Um. The level of specificity, I understand on those though, i- it may not be able to. Target or pinpoint one specific abandoned well that might be causing issues. Um, so additional thought on that too is that as it pertains to this specific discussion. Um. Monitoring as it pertains to abandoned well sites, so.
Are you suggesting that the city will provide FLIR cameras? I'm very familiar with FLIR cameras. I have been out in the field. With a FLIR camera, so um. What are you suggesting?
It would be technology that a potential city out or a city inspector would have. Um. And Matt, if there's any other thoughts about how that technology is deployed, but yeah, there, that tech, those, those FLIR cameras are used for that purpose. Um, and used at the state level and potential city inspectors.
So Dominic, are you saying if an air quality monitoring system detects a, a. A raised level of some type of VOC or, or pluton. It may not be able to pinpoint exactly where or what is causing that, and then you will need some additional. Follow-up, if you will, using possibly a FLIR camera or other technology to locate that, the cause of that problem. Is that what?
Yeah, so it would be sort of problem solving, put on the, the, the city inspector. So you would get notification of some sort of spike arise. Um, in some type of emission. And you kind of reasonably defer that, okay, there's four or five potentially plugged and abandoned wells. In this location and one active well location and then have an inspector go and investigate and figure out what this, the cause is. Using those types of technologies.
So back to Dominic's question, thumbs up, thumbs down. Have we thoroughly addressed this question? I see a thumbs up. Uh, sparingly throughout the group. So thank you. I believe we can move on to the next topic, Dominic.
Okay. Uh, community notifications the next topic. So one council member requested discussion. On a community notification and monitoring system in the event of an air quality or public safety event. Um, we did want to mention that there are some areas within, currently within the, the best management practices is required, as well as the required emergency response plan. That do specify some standards as to provide a notification. Um, I know that there's been a larger discussion about community notification and some other system beyond that that could be contemplated and I. I think that that's what the, this question was getting at. So if there is additional discretion or direction on increased frequency of community notification. Um, and additional provisions around air quality reporting could be included. Um. So again, A or B, do we feel that there needs to be um, additional language proposed? Or is, are we saying that the language within the code is adequate? Is there additional desire discussion on this and further direction that you can provide staff?
You know, I think with this one, it's kind of uh, similar to our Sun Court discussions that we've had in the past of. The city's gonna have to have some type of skin in the game on this one because. If we're really trying to get these incidents out to our community. Asking them to subscribe to a second location or second place online or another source of everyday emails. Um. Just doesn't seem to be realistic. And so I think. If I were to ask at anything is that we kind of connect the dots. There is that. We create a mandatory, um. Mandatory. That they report to the city and the city then um, kind of works this into. The project that we've had, you know, great discussion about that. We're looking to have a better CRM system. That will allow for more immediate and more widespread uh, community. Communication through email subscriptions, um. You know, I manage a subscription at the state that has seventy-eight hundred users. Uh, that's kind of what I'm thinking about is you have an automated. Uh, or manual input system that. Um, anybody can go sign up for somewhere to what we have for the city managers report. Um, so on and so forth. But asking for a second, third, fourth, if we have five operators, do we have five systems that we have to subscribe to? That's why I think in, in my opinion, we, the city has to have a little bit of skin in this game and connect those dots. Um, where they, we have mandatory reporting back to the city and the city then transmits that messaging out to the community.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you, uh, Councilman Hurst. I think what. When I look at this is I don't want what's happening in Sun Court happen up north either. You know, when we're getting uh, information later or we're the only ones getting it. So when I look at this. Is, and, and I agree, I think the city has to have um. A partnership with them. Um, the, the thing is also is, you know, being that oil and gas is such a hot topic. Um, in different neighborhoods, they might, you know, they might have that certain neighborhood might. Uh, request to be on there, but I, but I do, I think if we could. Make it one system, working with all partners to have. Something they opt into, um, with the system we have or we're gonna have. Um, it would be useful, but to mandate. Every company to do something like this is just not reasonable. I don't think so. Um, and it's gonna be us and whoever we're working with, so. Um. Yeah.
So to that point. As currently drafted, it would, we would require no need to change the land development code to accomplish that. That's obviously an internal process. That obviously that we would work through and, and reengage with council once we actually have. Uh, some form of resource to be able to provide that would allow for the connecting the dots as I heard. So. To that. With the proposed draft that we have in place, it sounds as though council is good with what we have. I see it nod of the heads. Thank you.
So moving on to the, the next item then. Um, there were some. Questions from council regarding neighborhood meetings. So. Having a requested discussion around neighborhood meetings and specifically around the required number of neighborhood meetings. Um. As proposed in the March draft, there is a current requirement for a neighborhood meeting. It does specify a minimum of one. And I will say in the past with other development projects, um. Where no ne- neighborhood meetings were required, there, there actually has been, depending on the scope of the project, multiple neighborhood meetings that are conducted over a period of time. Um, but if there was an, an addition or need to increase the frequency. Um. I- in terms of facilitating that discussion, um. Maybe some, looking at some different ways to evaluate the number of required neighborhood meetings, um, whether it's the relationship with the size of the facility, the proximity of nearby residences. Quantity of nearby residences. Or meetings conducted in the general vicinity, vicinity of where the planned facility would be located. Um. So one council member requested no exemptions for neighborhood meetings. And that all neighborhood, members of neighborhood, including homeowners, renters, landowners and facility representatives would be notified. So to clarify again, as drafted. There wouldn't be any exemptions allowed from the neighborhood meeting requirement. If you're apply, applying for an oil and gas permit, you're required to have a neighborhood meeting. Um. For. This discussion, if we wanted to provide or if we wanted council to provide additional direction on. How neighborhoods defined here. Um, what areas are the most affected and where would, where would we direct? The operator to. Research and have. Those members be in attendance for the neighborhood meeting. What's that scale? Is it the entire city? Is it? All residences within twenty-five hundred feet? That type of thing. Um. So what's currently on the table now? So there was language that we. We struck here, but basically saying unless exempted by twenty-one, thirty-two, sixteen, eight. A minimum of one neighborhood meeting shall be required for all oil and gas permit applications. So that being said. And in terms of the aim beyond this one, the first one would be. Is it adequate to require a minimum of one neighborhood meeting and potentially more? Um, depending on. Staff's evaluation of the application? Or is there additional recommendations that council would like to provide to staff? Um, even. Potentially requiring more neighborhood meetings depending on a number of um, criteria that could be applied to an application.
Dominic, very quickly, if I may ask you a question. Uh, how does this stand with our existing process for other land uses that we also require neighborhood meetings? And or community engagement?
So I would say that this is the, the only, this would be the only. Land use application in the city that were, a neighborhood meeting would be required. Um, the current authority for land development code essentially authorizes staff to make a. A judgment call on applications and determine whether or not a neighborhood meeting is necessary. We do hold them very frequently for a number of different application types in the city. It's a familiar process that we go through and, and do, uh, but there is no current requirement for. An application to have a neighborhood meeting because of its application type, if that makes sense.
Could you go back to the previous slide, please?
Yes.
The, I see the change in red. But then I see in the first. In the first portion of the paragraph, the city may require. If it appears, oh, when it appears, that is. That it may have significant neighborhood impacts. Doesn't that contradict? Shall be required?
So let me go back and take a look at the draft. Um, the intent from a staff level is to require it in all circumstances. So if we need to do some words, nothing to make that clear. Um, the intent there is to not provide any sort of. Um, avenue for exemption from that requirement.
I would support no exemption.
I would support no exemption as well. I, I, I do think. I would like to hear people's perception on what neighborhood is, um. You know. Is twenty-five hundred feet enough? If we're proposing, you know. Several wells in an area, I'm not opposed to, to making that distance even further for a neighborhood meeting. Um. To me, it just seems like. We always talk about having transparency and not doing anything in the dark and. Then on the other side of the coin, you put out neighborhood or, you know, meeting requests and you get five people show up. Um. We, we, we can't uh, take that, you know, poor turnout. To heart. We gotta make it op, you know, make the option to anybody can come to this from our city. Um. I- in my point of view, it's. You gotta consider the perspectives, um, and, and that's what we're all here to do. Doesn't mean that we'll always make a decision that, you know, is agreed upon, but at the same time, let's have. Uh, open discussions about this. I have no problem with defining neighborhood in this situation as. You know, a fairly large space needs to be reserved because we're not sure how many people would show up because we're gonna make this open to our residents of Commerce City.
Yeah, and I think for me on this one is, you know, we in the past. Have. Always said, let's, let's bridge the gap between core and north. Why not notify the entire city? Honestly, because it is Commerce City. It's not Bell Creek, it's not Reunion. Um, yeah, there might be drilling. Around that area. But there's people in the southern part that have relatives up here that might not have seen it. Or so my thing for this is notification. I know we've had. Uh. We've had some. Uh, discussion about. You know, the storage and how many people got that little postcard? Or how many people? Uh, got the little green postcard that. Think it's junk mail in my neighborhood for a planning. Uh, uh, another. Uh, building behind my house. And I didn't even see it, right? So to me, it's, it's about being notified and being transparent to the whole city of Commerce City. Um, and letting them know because. If we want to define neighborhood and say, okay, well. This. Operator is gonna do at Blue Jay and we're only gonna do twenty-five hundred feet. How's that fair to the rest of the residents that have to drive by there or wanna just? Uh, maybe move back there. So to me, I think one neighborhood meeting should be required. And if staff desires that they need more, it should be more. But it's more about how we notify. All the residents of Commerce City that this is happening. Um. We don't want. You know, we got tons of people from that neighborhood where the storage area was. That some of them i- uh, in a bo- in a block radius, didn't even see. The meeting that was happening for that in a block radius. The lady that has her house be uh, in front of it. So. I would want to add language where it has to be very clear. That this is a neighborhood meeting for this wow, for this facility. But all is welcome. Um. And, and I know in the past we've updated how we notify. More residents. But I think this is, this is a, a point where we could really exceed and say, you know what? We're really conscious about what we do in our city, um, and we want the input of all our residents, not just Bell Creek or Reunion or Buffalo. So I would want the notification for all our residents. Um, and, and you know, that does carry a, a price tag. We've all campaigned and sent mailers out, but if we could do it. I think a corporation who wants to be a good corporate partner with us and be transparent, they could do it also.
So I actually wanted to get a different direction and, um, and Jose, I think you're spot on. Everything you said one hundred percent correct. And the fact that everybody should know and the postcard doesn't cut it. But you know, I look at the process it takes in order to get a liquor license in the city. And you have to go out and you have to actually get signatures from residents that live within a certain, um. Radius of that facility that's gonna get liquor license. And I don't see why we can't port that same system into getting your oil and gas permit. If you want an oil and gas permit, then you should have to go out and you should have to get signatures from all the residents that live within that twenty-five hundred foot radius. So that you know they've been contacted and you know what their position is on it. And that's a start for that, but then taking it further and saying everybody in the city should get a notification. There's no reason why anybody should not know that this is up for discussion. It's one of the things I talked about with the, uh, you know, land use cases and stuff. It shouldn't just be the people that live within, you know, the radius of that land use case. Everybody should know exactly what is going on in all places at all times. So. I'd like to see this two face. One, I think we implement the, uh, same policy and procedure that's used for getting a liquor license or a marijuana license where they gotta go door to door. And get those signatures and say, hey, this is what we're planning on doing to make sure that everybody is fully aware of it within that radius. And then two, we go with a more robust and more active way of, of learning the entire city know. That, hey, these permits are on the table, that they're coming up for review. And if you wanna have your voice heard, then you need to go make sure that your voice is heard.
I'd support that.
I would too. And I, I, I think this is a good point to, uh, mention also because, um, council member. Guardiola, you talked about Blue Jay. I just wanna remind everyone that the seven applications that are in. Would not be affected by these draft regulations. That we are talking about right now.
Now I just use that as an example. I was gonna say like Red Robin, but I heard Blue Jay earlier.
Yeah, right. I just, I just wanted anyone who's, who's watching to. Understand that the seven applications for seven sites around Northern Commerce City will not. Have any of these things apply to it. Only new applications will.
Uh, I would, I also support at least one meeting. I think where it's appropriate to ask for a second is when a. Significant period of time passes and development hasn't occurred. Um, it's kind of like a restart on notifications, uh, you know, people have moved and. Um, I think if you, if you exceed a certain period of time, you should host a second meeting. Um, just to make sure you're catching all the people that may not have been included, um, maybe a year prior. As far as notifying the whole city, I, I'm on board with that. I would ask that we do it in a way where. We choose mailings within a certain radius and then an announcement. Um, from the city social media account to the rest of the city. I'm not sure that I, I agree with having to mail a letter to every house in the city, but notification of every house, sure.
If I may be able to offer what we currently do with our subdivision filings, our administrative in nature. We will do a mailing or not, we, um, but when actually we, yes, for posting of approval of administrative. We will do a mailing within three hundred feet. Uh, so if you apply the same. The same methodology for an applicant on oil and gas, if they were to set a mailing within twenty-five hundred feet. But also were to pay for a posting within maybe one or two of the local newspapers, which will hopefully. Have a broad, widespread, uh, reach to, uh, our community. Uh, once remember, we have sixty-two thousand plus or minus residents. And, uh, a couple hundred plus or more, um, businesses as well, which we may or may not have up to date information from Adams County. As it relates to who is still living within that home and who is not. Even if they're a landlord and whether or not it goes to the landlord, if they're sharing it with the tenant. So I, I hear where council's going, but also trying to share as well that, you know. There may be, uh, another way of still being able to get that broad, that broad approach and reach to the community to make them aware. Of what's occurring, maybe not in their backyard, but something that they have a very strong sentiment and, and interest in and wanna be able to weigh in.
Uh, I'm still holding out again. I wanna see him have to go door to door and get signatures like you do for a liquor license. If it's required for a liquor license, it'll be required for something as, uh, serious as an oil and gas permit.
I would just ask mayor, what, um, what would that accomplish in terms of? So what if you have people who refuse to sign it, even if it's just a disclosure? Um, does that change the ability to apply for a permit? Um, what good is it if you get a signature for somebody who isn't in support of? Um, the, the plans, um, I just, I think there's some problems with doing door to door signatures. Unless you put some definitions around what that means, um, if you do or don't get signatures.
Yeah, I would employ the same, uh, um, procedures that are used for the application of a liquor within the city.
Before council goes too far down the, the, um, discussion of having signature gathering. Um, I would like to bring back a mechanism of how that might work if the majority of council wants to go. That route, I would say getting that in place and modifying this notification standard significantly would substantially delay. The implementation of these regulations at this point is one note. Two, the liquor licensing structure is fundamentally different from oil and gas permitting. Um, from. It being rooted in an entirely separate concept of land use, um, versus a business operation. Um, I understand the similarities, but there are differences there. And I also believe that the concept in liquor licensing is, um. What's known typically as a needs and desires survey where, um. Uh, the liquor authority, which is in Commerce City, a hearing officer kind of defines the boundary of the neighborhood and then the. Um, that survey in petition is used as evidence of the neighborhood's willingness that this occur. And so it's not a consent gathering process from an entirety of a neighborhood, but there is then defining the neighborhood. And it's essentially evidence that, um, there is not an objection or that the community actually wants something to occur. Uh, so it is, it is different. It is not a veto from, um, the community and from a neighborhood or, or the residents. And the ultimate authority to make a decision still rests in, um. The body, uh, the individual or the body in this case that would issue and approve a permit. So, um. Several points there, but keep that in mind before we spend too much more time on that.
I think the point, the point that's trying to be made though is that. And, and I, no disrespect, but I, I think newspaper notification is archaic. I haven't read a newspaper in over a decade. Um, you know, maybe, maybe a couple of times here and there, but i- i- in reality, that's not what I was looking for. When I, when I was getting into the newspaper. So, um. Uh, I think that's bothered several of us for a long time. I, I don't know that we have, you know, the, the, uh. Perfect solution, you know, without, you know, building and developing a system for notification. But I think that's what we're all kind of leaning towards is that, you know, we've had the discussion about Suncor, had the discussion about, uh, you know. Increasing our online system that we use for the, the managers report. But, but really providing that notification as a customer service beyond a little stake in the ground. Um, or a community center posting, um, in a newspaper article, we're trying to say, you know, we need to find a way where we can notify the city. That is in today's century, um, you know, i- in, in the modern times with technology and the ways that we have. Again, that's. I'm not, not, I still think there's great value, uh, in newspaper for, you know, certain folks. So that might, that might stay as a requirement, but for a, the, you know, maybe younger generation who. Gets ninety percent of their information off the phone in their pocket, I think, you know, communicating in that situation, uh, is far different. And so understanding that, I think what we're asking for is to come up with a more dynamic way to get this message out to as many people as possible. And the signature suggestion is for proof of that. And I, I think, um, that's where I'm kind of moving down towards is that. I would love to say social media is the best way to do it, but there's so many people that are so tired of social media, they're jumping off as fast as they jumped on. And so. How do we kind of spread that out and manage to, to hit the most, um, households in Commerce City? When we have a notification like this is what we're looking for.
And for me.
And, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Jose.
Um, thank you. Uh, and for me, it's, it's a mailer that doesn't look like a, a, a junk mailer, you know, um, to me, it's. Do we really, as a city, wanna notify our, our city, right? And this is an opportunity for us to say, no, we just don't want a, a little black and white on a green piece of paper of this is happening. Make this a very, uh, colorful postcard. That when they're going, because everybody still gets the mail even regardless, you know, and I hear you, Craig. I think this is a hard. Spot where we, there's so many different modes, people get it, but I think a mailer, still people, everybody gets mail. And it's how they send it out. It's not just a typical postcard. You know, when you get, it, coming up campaign season, we're all gonna get them, right? And it's all colorful. This and that, vote for this, vote for that. And you kind of take a look at it and then you see, oh, it's a campaign. You, you toss it or whatever. This has to be, um, modified to tell them that it has to be something that people are attracted to. So they could actually read it now. If the person just throws it away, that's on them. You know, they can't just say, you know, people have brought those cards up. To our council meetings and shown us, you know, how are we supposed to read this? Look at the print. That's fine, but no, look at, look at our new card or, or new standard that we want. I agree, signatures would be awesome, but I don't want them also to say, I'm not gonna sign it. I'm not gonna sign it, so. It d- d- derails the whole purpose of it and how do we get proof of like, hey, well, they went door to door, you know? Um, so I think we have to find a medium because signatures would be good. That way they know. But if not, if they're not home, and if not, I think a mailer to the city saying. This is a permit or this is a neighborhood meeting that's coming up in big bold letters. So they cannot say I didn't get nothing notified. So.
I'd, I would just jump in and, and give a little bit of, um, background on how that typically happens, um, because, you know, we, we do have to give notification. Um, as part of COGCC requirements and the letters that go out, I think that we could. Could suggest, we could, we could require certain documents to be included. When we do letters. Um, for neighborhood meetings right now, it comes with a cover page that, you know, describes the project, who's the company? Where is this gonna be located? It comes with an attached map that shows, you know, where are the cross streets? What is the pad gonna look like? It has more detail to it and it comes in official, um, you know, letterhead type, uh, envelope and letterhead. Uh, the letter is printed on letterhead, so it does look more official. Um, and you know, the way that we have. In the past, kind of shown who's responding to that, you know, if you do a, we do a sign in sheet at neighborhood meetings. Um, and that kind of shows, you know, who's coming, who's asking questions. We actually document what questions are asked, how they were answered, who answered them. Um, you know, was it, was it the operator that answered? Um, you know, with, with Adams County, they always send. Um, representative from the county as well, because some of the questions do end up being related to county services, not necessarily. The operator, and I think that could be true for the city, uh, city questions as well. And so, um, you know, all that to say, I think. Absolutely, it's gotta be more than a postcard. We've, you know, my experience has never been a postcard in terms of notifications for neighborhood meetings. Uh, for oil and gas. And I think it's absolutely appropriate to ask for, you know, you gotta put a cover letter in there telling us what you're doing. Where is it gonna be happening? Um, you know, where, what's a map look like? Put a map in there. Um, and I think that goes a long way to get past the, the junk mail toss.
Um, if I can interject really quickly and then kind of just, um, make an observation of something I'm noticing here. Um, as it pertains to notification, obviously we have the current processes that are in place for all development in the city. So let's say that someone wants to rezone a hundred acre property and there's certain notification that's currently embedded in the code and how that happens now. Um, and you, you guys are certainly right about how design decisions and what postcards look like, the size, the font, the colors, all of that. And how that's laid out and how that visually draws attention to the eye are all major and significant decisions that are needed in order to be able to draw attention to certain projects. Um, and what I'd like to ask is in the nature of this conversation. Um, does it make sense to potentially look at this in the broader scope of overall development in the city? Um, do we make notifications different when there's a variance versus when someone wants to apply to develop a multifamily building? Um, what does that documentation look like? Do we wanna address it? Is there something that council wants to take up specifically with the oil and gas register, or regulations? Or would there be, um, the idea to potentially have a separate study, study session on. Community notification processes outside of this where other recommendations can be put in, in place. As it pertains to other development in the city as well. So all, all the totality of applications that people apply for.
I would prefer to stay on topic on the oil and gas. I think a lot of great points have been made. We can look at the notification system regarding other development in the future if, if, uh, that's the council's desire, but. Um, I would support the ideas that my fellow council members have communicated.
So if I may offer, uh, obviously this is something that we will have to go back, take a look at further refine. Um, to be able to strike a balance based on what we heard from councils today, obviously. Um, that allows for a, a, a proactive and, and broader reach. Um, I'll say using, uh, a multitude of different media. Uh, in order to be able to get a great, good cross section, uh, from, from council. Uh, so that being said, um, are we comfortable with staff taking another crack at that based off of what we heard from the night?
Alright, so this is the next topic, approval process. Multiple council members requested discussion around the approval process for oil and gas permits. What circumstances administrative approval or quasi judicial approval is appropriate? And whether all approval should be granted by council. Um, so the March draft, um, proposed council approval for all oil and gas permits. So as currently drafted, um, and oil and gas per would need, would be approved by council unless it qualifies as a limited exemption site. As defined in twenty-one, thirty-two, sixteen, five B one or I five BI. Um, the amount of available land that qualifies under this criteria is significantly limited compared to. The total available land where a oil and gas operator could apply, um, under the, the general setback standards. So there were some proposed limited exemption revisions based on, uh, staff's re-review of the documents of the public comments made. Um, so as proposed, in order to be qualified as a limited exemption site where it would go through an administrative review. You'd have to be two thousand feet away from items A through E. Would need to be one thousand feet from public water supply wells and reservoirs. Would have to be outside of the FEMA one hundred year floodplain boundary and any areas defined as unsuitable for development. And then generally be with an area that's zoned industrial or has a future land use designation of industrial. And if you actually map out and look at the exercise of those locations, um, it's significantly less than what would be allowed. Under the normal setback requirements of a thousand feet from residential homes. And the other provisions in twenty-one, fifty-two, sixty-six subsection six. Um, and then we're gonna talk about this a little bit with initial assessment as well. Uh, because as we talk about this, the limited exemption process is through, um, the initial assessment process. So that being said, we can come back to the, uh, the waiver for the minimum three site requirement. Um, but does council believe that? Generally speaking for A, that there should be some differentiation between administrative and council approval based on the criteria of the site? Or every oil and gas permit should be approved through council? Which would be option B?
I believe that every oil and gas. Permit should come through the planning commission in the city council. Because it means that there will be transparency. It gives the neighborhood meetings meaning. If there is any discretion, no matter the setback, then that. Then that. Essentially excludes community participation. These are far too impactful. To not. Have uh full hearings on these. There are very few sites that we're even talking about. Um. I don't know. What you meant by there is more land available than there is under limited exemption. I can look at a map and see that there's some twenty five square miles of North Commerce City that are already. Uh, proposed to be taken. By oil and gas operators, so I'm not sure. Where you see other facilities coming in unless it's in our growth area. Or under. The. Industrial. Um. Buildings which they don't seem to have an interest in uh. Fracking under.
Sort of clarifying that obviously is the as the city continues to annex in the future through the growth boundary, a lot of these regulations would be in place there. So that is a little bit more forward thinking. About in the future, how that regulation will come into play with um the limited exemption versus non limited exemption. Um, and this is essentially, yes, evaluating. Within the city's square mile or twenty one square or I'm sorry, thirty five square miles. Where a potential facility could be located. As long as showing that it meets the minimum code requires the minimum setback requirements. If you look at the limited exemption criteria versus the base code requirements. Um, there is a gap between those two, so the amount of limited exemption sites is significantly less than the council approved sites.
Again, I'll repeat, there is very little land left in northern uh Commerce City that has not already been. Um, chosen by an oil and gas operator. If you're looking into the future, we can always revisit this, but in the meantime. Um, I think it's best that we do it all transparently. And fully engaging the public, just as we clearly. Wanted to do with neighborhood meetings.
I'm okay with that.
I'm also okay with um administrative approval unless an exemptions being sought.
I don't, I don't want to lose our transparency. I I think. I think I I I see both sides, just because. We're setting s- um land development code standards. Um, if you exceed them by a significant amount as suggested. Um. To allow for administrative. It would seem like, you know. That's one of those that would get pushed through and meet all of our requirements. So how, you know. Are we looking for a chance to move the goalposts is what I'd be worried about. I I definitely want to um keep the level of. These major decisions fall back on council. Um, you know, as the elected official, I I have no problem having that discussion every single time. Um, and justifying the reason I'm voting the re the way I do, whether it's for or against. But at the same time, if we lay out some pretty some standards that we're comfortable with and feel are pretty strict. Um, and and then they're exceeded because of of land. You know, so what's the compromise? I don't have a good answer for that, because I think it is very important that we make really tough decisions to the elected officials.
I I agree with, you know, with all due respect, Councilman Hurst. Uh, unfortunately, if we're presented with a case that meets all of the requirements of our land development code. We wouldn't have an option except to approve. What basis could we deny a permit application if they've met all of the land development code requirements? So I think we get into a slippery slope of um. Legal challenges, really, you can't deny something where where someone has met the requirements of the code.
Well, and that's that's kind of why I say I'm I'm okay with transparency there is because we are then going to be, it it is kind of a. A dog and pony show, if you will, because we were walking through the reasons why this meets this certain set of expectations. That have exceeded our LDCs. But at the same time, we've allowed for public comment, we've. Had discussion and then it gets approved if it meets those standards, as we said, because we talk about the quasi judicial. And you're right, it you you outside of the law, you know, we we have to take only what's considered uh in in the case.
Can we go back a slide, please? Thank you, and I believe that under, oh, oh, one more slide. Please, yeah. Um, under limited exempt, I believe that there were also exceptions and variances and modifications that were made available to um. Administrative in the administrative process. So that's quite different from them meeting our minimum standards. Is that correct, Dominic?
Can you rephrase the question? Are you are you saying that there's an exemption from?
There there is a possibility. In the administrative process. Of modifications or variances being approved.
Not for this section. It applies only to twenty one fifty two sixty six six.
Okay, you're gonna explain that, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it applies only to the setback requirement, the reverse setback requirement. So you can't apply for a variance. Saying that I think I should be a limited exemption site. On fifteen hundred feet away, there would be no variation. There's very specific limited instances where you could seek a modification and this would not be one of them. Does that make sense?
Yeah. At the moment, there's really only one that uh that I can even think of. I just don't, I. You know, it was said by another council member two weeks ago that we don't have time to do this. We don't, we shouldn't be the COGCC. I think quite the contrary. We most certainly have time to do this, and this is exactly why we're here, is to make the difficult decisions and to be accountable. To our residents. And we need to be able to address this. Again, I said this at the beginning. I don't want someone to come up to me and say, how did this get approved? And I just shake my head and say, well, you know. Staff approval. That just doesn't work. That was done on the ROA too. That was just signed because the city council didn't take a vote on it. That isn't how it should be. This should be very transparent and we should be accountable. Under all circumstances.
And and I agree with you uh definitely, but I think if they have met everything in. Our. LDC and we're gonna approve that. We're basically approving. These are our standards. These are our regulations. These are our guides. And if they fall within them. I mean, then they did everything that we are asking them to do because of these. Um, conversations and discussions that are we having right now for this. So I I too believe that we need to be held accountable, but I think we have to also. Let the administration process. Administrative process that we put and set in place. Let it do its job.
We already, but don't we already do um? We have development, public hearings. That we vote on and the staff gives us a recommendation on this, on that. Whether they comply, et cetera. So it would be no different than what we're already doing.
Aren't those generally when they're outside of? Code?
That's as part of our quasi judicial um hearing process. That would be your conditional use permits. That would also be your. Rezone application, so changing property that's maybe agricultural to residential or commercial in nature. And then in the off chance, if there's an appeal of an administrative application. We will bring forward as part of a de novo hearing. Uh, those items for the planning commission and city council for for action.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, our job is to. Create good rules that staff can point to. Such as these and. They can move the process along and. You know, right now, we we don't have those. And until we vote these in. We don't have anything, so. All the permits already submitted, this won't apply to. As Councilwoman Noble already alluded to, so. Longer that we don't. Pass something like this, the. Longer that we don't have anything in place, so. I I think, you know, having good rules and allowing staff to. Um, vet those and. Go through all these uh checkboxes, which are very stringent. You know, it it just uh keeps things moving along and. I I think, you know, I'm all for transparency, but. At the same time. It feels like we're just trying to make it a show. Because we're. On one hand, we're asking for transparency, but on the other hand, we're saying it meets all the rules. Um, we have to approve it. So what's the point of going through that show and giving people false hope? When staff has already vetted these and said, yes, they meet all the criteria and then some. To uh to develop.
Well, to play devil's advocate, though, rules are subject to interpretation. And sometimes people look at a rule and think that. It uh meets the rule and approves something that should have never been approved. So you have that uh that thing. I mean, if we truly want to say that there's no point in us taking action on this, then. Why are we taking action on zoning cases? If it meets a criteria for a zoning case, shouldn't those be administratively approved? Why do we take action on uh conditional use permits? If it meets the criteria for the land development code, then that should be administratively approved. And we go down the list over and over and over. With every quasi judicial hearing we have. So why is it that we accept the fact that part of our roles of city council is to do quasi judicial hearing on zoning cases? On conditional use permits, on PUD amendments and things of that nature. Yet on this one, we're willing to punt and just say, no, just let it go administratively. Um, again, I I look at it as, you know, when you have a set of rules, those are subject to interpretation. Nine of the greatest scholars to uh ever live are sitting on a Supreme Court. And they can't always agree on what the rules say. They it's always subject to their interpretation as well. So that being said, I think that the city council should have an opportunity to look at the rules themselves and determine how those rules are applied. And apply the rules in the best manner that they see fit. So I'm all for going doing away with the administrative approval process. And bringing all these cases in front of the city council. If uh you're telling me that this isn't that important and we shouldn't be doing that. Then next week, let's go back and have another meeting and talk about all the other quasi judicial cases that we don't need to hear anymore.
So having heard the conversation, thank you all. Kind of getting back to the point, administrative versus quasi judicial. I've heard some in favor of yes administrative, I've heard some in favor of no quasi judicial. What what says the council with how they would like to direct staff uh with respect to what we currently have? Thumbs up to administrative, kind of just going with that one first. See one. And or going to a quasi judicial hearing process in front of city council. Right, I see the majority being for quasi judicial, so we will continue on. And we have our, we have our direction with that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next topic is fines and fees. Um, there were multiple council members that requested discussion on this topic. Um. One council member felt that his draft of the ordinance could lead to duplication of fines and fees that are implemented by the state. And could lead to fines being levied that are inappropriate. Um. Given that fines are levied by the state against an operator. Um, there's no current. Form for any of those fees that go to the state to be recruited by the local governments to assist on a local level for remediation of the violation. Um. So that, that being said, that there there is some level um of consideration on staff to have some sort of immediate. Remediation or penalty to um conduct remediation for onsite violations necessary to protect health, safety, welfare and the environment. Uh, there was one council member that recommended that penalties accrued daily. And that penalty should be raised to a thousand dollars per day and that the penalty addition should account for the cost of the city's emergency response. Um, as part of that. The city does retain the right to levy a new fine each day a violation is present, and that's um something that's typically instituted. Um, the city is statutorily limited at the state level by how much it can charge the municipal code violations and what's currently proposed in the draft is that maximum amount. And as part of that too, as a as it pertains to emergency response, the operator is currently required to provide. Um, a can serve letter from the fire district showing that they. Um, are providing adequate, number one, adequate emergency response training or equipment. Training or a fee in lieu satisfactory to the applicable fire district to. Um, provide new equipment to respond to any instances that may result from their operations. Um. So this this discussion here is. Does council A feel that this topic is adequately addressed in terms of the fine and fee schedule and some of the other um cost recruitment mechanisms? Or is there additional language changes that are needed uh pertaining to fines and fees? So I I think that making the fine the maximum allowable by state and make the fine every day that the violation exists is the prudent way to go.
So not seeing any other comments or questions? Is there a general consensus agreement across the the council or? For for what type of violation, though? I mean, wh- what are we violating anything? You get a maximum fine for every viol- like any part of this LDC? It's kind of what I want.
So anything that's within the land development code, so anything that the city would have authority to regulate, it's a pertains to oil and gas.
Um, but some requires zero response, uh, emergency response, some requires zero of that. And quite honestly, the taxes that we collect off the site should cover those costs. So. To me, the fines are for, need to be defined for specific emergency. Um, situations that are caused by. An out of the ordinary event at the at the location. We are going to assess significant fees and taxes. On each location to cover the cost of doing business in in the city. Um. Uh, I I don't think we look at any other industry or business as. Well, you're gonna pay us taxes and we're just gonna pocket those, but every other cost of the city associated will have to be additional out of your pocket. We don't do that to anybody else. Uh, and so. Having that discussion about. What regulates a maximum or what constitutes a maximum fine? Um, because I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that we should use the maximum fine. Uh, out there on a day to day basis, but what I, the only disagreement I have is that it's. In every facet of the of the code, you know, there are things that it doesn't make sense. Um, for a maximum fine every day, uh, and then there are things that it absolutely makes sense. And so. Um. To me, I just would like to expand that discussion before we really uh move on or, you know, vote and move on to the next topic.
And really quickly on that, and Matt Hader, if you're still on the line, it might be necessary to to weigh in a little bit. Um, but to your point, correct. So essentially, we're in within the land development code. There are certain regulations and aspects that we would. Want to assess fines and levy fines and instances of life safety instances. Um, if you look at our current regulations, it's mostly the the best management practices where that will come into play. Um, for instance, if we we discover through an inspection that an operator has been using um a prohibited type of um. Nomadic valve or something that causes air emissions and has a health safety issue, that's an immediate circumstance where a fine might be levied. Um, if there's another in the code where um all of the the tanks have to be painted a certain color and we find out that. They painted their tank green instead of orange or something along those lines. Then that's not an instance where a fine would be levied. And Matt Hader, I know that you might have a better understanding of the municipal code and and other areas of section three about. Guidelines as to when a fine is implemented, um, but I know in general practice, there's certainly various areas within the code that. Are regulated, but a fine is not assessed in every scenario.
Sure, I don't know that there's a a specific question to address here, but I'd be happy to do that, but basically the the fine schedule that was proposed for oil and gas operations. So if our inspector goes out and finds a problem on site. Um, was not the maximum fine allowable under state law. It was a progressive fine structure similar to other violations of of the code. As it related to oil and gas violations for violations of sections thirty two sixteen and fifty two sixty six. It was a a first, first fine was five hundred dollars. Second fine for the same violation. Uh, which would be at the same site would be a thousand dollars. Third site would be, excuse me, third fine would be three thousand. And then the fourth. excuse me, third fine would be three thousand, and then the fourth would be the maximum allowable by law, which um right now is approximately three thousand and eighty four dollars, I believe. It's, it's tied to a CPI for the greater Denver area um off of a, off the number twenty six fifty as of twenty fourteen. So that goes up every year. Um, so that was how the, the structure was done, basically in part because our existing fee structure for, for violations is, is pretty dated as well. Um, so that was the, the digest of how the changes were, how the fine structure was. Um, so things that are, are basically um you know, just kind of of randoms. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to think of a good example of something that would be a uh a violation. Um, you know, but we have all these things in fifty two sixty six about things have to happen uh um in terms of, you know, what we, what we have the authority to regulate. So our C O G is, C O G C is regulating those downhill issues. We're going to be finding for those violations, we are, you know, we're regulating the land use, what's happening around it. And uh finding for violations of those issues that are addressed in our code.
So I just. I know I didn't ask your question, so I don't, I don't want you to have to keep going down that, that hole. If uh, I, I just want to address. Look, there are certain things. We have landscaping requirements around every well site.
Absolutely.
For good reason. But if a tree dies, like thousands of tree die up, up, on Commerce City, you know, every year, we have, similar to neighborhood services, we don't go for maximum penalty, uh, you know, day one and every day until they replace the tree. That seems a little ridiculous. And so we, we work a process like that. So I just want to make sure we're defining here in this moment that there are, the severity of the issue is what constitutes the fine structure. And it's not, you know, we're going to hit you nickel and dime you and all of a sudden, you know, we're a cat, they're a cash cow for the city. That just doesn't make sense. We needed to find that early and make sure that we're setting the expectations. And and I don't think that's the intent. I just want to make sure that we're clearly defining that in this uh situation.
No, I don't think that's just happening here. And and the bottom line is, um, you know, we find someone and they come into compliance. You give them a, a notice of violation and they typically come into con- compliance, no different, I wouldn't expect anything different from an oil and gas operator. Um, they don't want to be in violation of the code. They don't have to pay fines even more than we, anymore than we want to have to go out there and find them. Um, what you will see in the rarest of cases is somebody who is openly defiant would could potentially get hit with a new notice of violation every single day, back to back. Um, and that is probably the most coercive means we have to try to get somebody who just flagrantly does not want to be in compliance. That's probably the most coercive means we have to bring them into compliance. Because every day under the code for any violations, whether it's oil and gas or, or weeds or anything else in the city, each day you're in violation constitutes a new violation, but you have to be cited again on that subsequent day.
So back to the question at hand, with fines. Understanding what is the direction that council would like to give to staff, uh, continue with what we have, obviously knowing that potential adjustments may have to be made, given obviously other uh associated ordinances, or uh do we want to have a further evaluation and refinement um to the structure as identified?
A for me.
Yeah.
It's some A for me as well.
Alright. So.
I'm good with that.
So what I'm hearing, the general consensus and assumption is to continue moving forward with what staff has proposed in its draft, okay?
So this is um another item that was raised, a third party review. Um, one council member requests that technical study should not be required of operators of other uses and activities in the city not required to provide such studies. Um, especially as it pertains to industrial businesses that are reviewed through the conditional use permit process. Um, this is an example of where the city may retain right for a third party review um of something that it doesn't have current capacity and staff to conduct. And the city may reserve the right to request additional plans and studies to evaluate the potential impacts of a proposed use. Um, so that, that's a consideration in, in essentially what is, is being contemplated through the third party review item. So with that, does council feel that having some form of reservation for additional third party review um for an aspect of oil and gas permit um is necessary in terms of option A, or there's additional language proposed option B?
I like having the option of the third party review. Um, I think it's incorrect to say that we don't do that for other businesses within the city. There's a lot of times whenever we send permits and plan checks and stuff like that out to third party for review, so I don't see this as being any different. Um, you know, we don't do the water, we don't do the fire department. We send those to, or the fire review for plan check, we send those to those other agencies. So if we have an issue arise, I'd rather have the capability of sending outside for legal technical expertise versus not having that ability at all. So I think this is a good thing to have in there.
I concur.
I see a lot of heads shaking. Yeah, so I'm going to take that as.
Yeah.
That's it.
The reason I concur too is just like Mayor Hughesman said, in transportation projects, that's required all the time. Uh, it's very normal. Um, and everything that I deal with, so it doesn't seem out of the ordinary.
Okay. If not, not hearing any objections, I think staff has, has what we need. We'll move to the next item.
Okay. So this is a, another item that was brought up um by multiple council members regarding plug and abandonment of oil and gas sites. Um, basically some discussion on, there were um initial language in the code that the city may require the operator plug and abandon in compliance of all C O G C rules and regulations um for any wells that are within the drilling and spacing unit application um for a man well site in conjunction with um regulating some of these older legacy wells where they're targeting the same formation to try and um reduce the amount of existing kind of old legacy wells that are at the surface. Um. Essentially, what's being proposed here is to reduce that from required to request to ensure that the city is, is not um creating instances where it's preempted by the state um with uh preemption on downhill issues. So there's recommending that staff has the, the March ten language with the justification that some are downhill activities have real service impact. So this was one of the requests that we had from one of the council members. Basically, two s- two schools of thought is that essentially keeping the requirement in place for them to remove them or to basically say that there's instances where we may require it, but may not choose to. Um, Senate Bill one eighty one limits local government's authority to regulate that instance. And then the draft C O G C rules are going to be taking up um this specific instance regarding plugging and abandon, abandonment of unused legacy wells necessary to protect health, safety and welfare. So what we're looking at here is, is an A vote is um saying that it's okay for, based on the result of the assessments the city may request. And a vote for B would be the city require um the plugging and amendment of certain wells.
I think it's always good to have the stronger language available to you. So I think may require is the best and require request is covered under both of those.
Yeah, I would like to keep require.
I would too.
I'm okay with that.
I would keep require.
Okay, it seems we have consensus on this one. If, if there's any thoughts, alright, we'll move on to the next one. Uh, permit transfer. There were a number of uh questions brought up by council about permit transferability with one council member requesting the removal of twenty one thirty two sixteen fourteen D, um which requires that an oil and gas permit may not be transferred within ninety days of initial approval. Um, one council member requested that a transferable permit may only occur prior to the drilling and completions phase. And then one council member recommended the site must be inspected and brought up to code before a transfer can be approved. Um, regarding this, staff wanted to note that the current draft states the director may can sign assignment of a permly, permit only if the new operator will remedy any non-site compliance with any applicable local or state regulations and confirm, and permits as a condition of assignment. Um, so basically saying that that permit transfer can't occur if there's a site that's active, actively violating state or um local regulations. Um, and as with other businesses, the city would not be able to dictate whether an oil and gas pro- property can be sold, traded or signed, and the regulations that are in place um would have to be followed by the new owner. Um, so basically what we're looking at on this vote is a vote for A would be saying that the current language for permit transferability is um favored or B would be incorporating some of the additional language changes like um removing the ninety day waiting period or putting a limitation on the um transferable permit prior to the drilling and completions phase. So um an A vote would be, would be that if there's any other discussion or thoughts uh with that.
Dominic, so you know, the, the quickest thing I can think of that I'm trying to, to relate this to is a lien on a house um for whatever reason, where if you're going to buy and transfer the deed of the house, you must pay the lien first. Is that, is that kind of, what's our legal authority? Do we, are we placing like a legal lien on a, a non-compliant um operation? So it must take place before the transfer happens? I, I guess really, I want to make sure we have a legal process that make sure that it is um brought up to compliance before the transfer uh happens.
So I don't know if I'm the best one to answer that in terms of the lien process. Matt, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
If it doesn't have a lien process, I just, is there something similar to that transaction requirement?
So maybe a, a good way to think about this, Councilmember Hearst, is when we go through the development review process on subdivision, right? We will have developer A who will take it through the final planning process, they report lots. And then once they receive their approval, the next day they will then assign that plat to a merchant builder of whoever, home builder A, home builder B, home builder C, who then would take over the responsibility and the requirements of public improvement agreement that's associated to that plat for delivering certain infrastructure needs uh that were associated with the development to offset any impacts. So it's very similar to that as far as a transfer of a permit, permit or an assignability of a permit uh once an approval has been undertaken.
It also reminds me of uh buying a home. And if someone put in a bathroom, a kitchen and a closet in the basement without a permit and you buy that home, you have to um get a permit for all of that work that was done without a permit. So in essence, I'm hoping that what we're looking at here is that these sites would have to be brought up to compliance with current regulations, whatever they might be at the time of the, after, at the time of the transfer in order for the oil and gas um site to be operable or to move forward.
Yeah, but that, that would be in alignment with what land development code already does, right? And so if you built your building in nineteen fifty and you're now selling it to somebody um before that transfer agreement can be signed, you, you have to meet current land development codes unless there's some type of grandfather clause. I, I think that's what we're all trying to get at, is there's no grandfather clause that allows them to, you know, skirt anything. Um, you're missing, and, and I think Director Rogers explained it to me well that there wouldn't be.
Is that correct, Director Rogers? That's all I'm confirming. I was just asking you a question.
So with a, with an approval by the city, um, the, the application or development is subject to the requirements at the time that it was approved unless that development permit application, whatever it might be, falls out of compliance. So let's say they get a, somebody gets a development permit application and they don't, within the next year, two years, three years, within the expiration date of their approval, undertake the vertical construction, then they are no longer valid and have to come back through our process. So if they can demonstrate at the time with the transferability of that, that project, that application, that they are still in compliance with their approvals, then they are allowed to continue moving forward or the successor ventures that then allow to continue moving forward with said application and the standards that govern its approval at that time. Uh, if it's twenty twenty, twenty twenty one or so forth, that is what an application would have to be, would be governed under.
Alright, so then we would not be able to apply new regulations. Let's say they began their process in twenty twenty and ended it in twenty twenty three and then in twenty twenty four, we had new regulations that as Councilmember Grimes pointed out, may be about better air monitoring, for example. We would not be able to oppose, or would we, would we be able to impose new regulations on that site at the time of the transfer? I'm hearing you say, no, we would not be able to impose new regulations or the current regulations on this site.
With the exception, if there was a major amendment to the permit that was needed to be undertaken, um if there was substantial change to that permit, they would need to come into compliance with the, the new code. So that, that is a standard that's kind of in place with other development.
Is there a way that we can make it, make them bring it up to uh compliance with current standards, just as you would have to do with a building or, or um something else?
I may. I would have to look for Robert, we'll weigh in on that.
Hey, that's great, because I started to talk. Um, the, you get into the concept of vesting of rights. If the permit has been issued and approved and it has not lapsed or been revoked or um there is not a significant change um to the operations as has been noted, then the city could not go in and add new requirements to the permit. Um, when a house is sold, the house does not have to come into compliance as a condition of the transfer. The new owner is responsible for any non-compliant matters um that exist at the time of purchase. Um, and those carry and follow on, and that would be the case here. And that's the intention, I think, behind the March tenth draft was that the new owner would have to remedy any matter of compliance at that point, going a little bit beyond what your question was, Councilmember. Um. And that new operator may be in the best position to um cure any non-compliance because the point of the transfer may be because the other operator is in bankruptcy or is in default or is a problem. Um, and the new operator that would be acquiring it would come in and have the resources and wherewithal to cure that non-compliance. So that's, i- if you require compliance before transfer, the, the transfer of the property, then, or the permit, then you may be inhibiting that um compliance from occurring. Um, but back to the question of whether you can require them to uh come up to code simply because of assigning the permit. I believe the answer would be no, and that was the direction um generated originally. This, this was not a provision that was in the original draft back in November to um the original proposal from staff had been that permits not be transferable. Um, and that this was added to make sure that there was that flexibility.
Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Sheasley, though, I'm curious about something. Let's say we're looking at Suncor refinery again, for example. Suncor refinery has been around for a hundred plus years, but there are new regulations that are imposed on Suncor refinery on a regular basis. Are you saying that our hands are tied that even when new safety and health um procedures or equipment or any of that kind of thing, innovations come into being, there's nothing we can do about it. It will always be this old twenty twenty version of oil and gas.
I believe that Suncor uh as a refinery, which is regulated primarily by the state and the federal government, is a different beast and I'm not familiar with their. is a different beast, and I'm not familiar with their underlying regulatory basis. Subsurface extraction is regulated jointly then by the state and local governments. Ours, our regulatory authority primarily coming from a land use perspective, which would be have a different set of legal rules. I also don't believe that the permits, uh, that the operations would necessarily continue in the same way. There would necessarily be upgrades at times and changes to facilities that would have to be made. I would ask Mr. Sura if you are still on the line, if you are familiar with that sort of provision occurring in any other community in Colorado, where a permit transfer would be required to upgrade to newer standards.
No, typically for the reasons that you were mentioning, it's a vested right. Having said that, I think that there are certainly some new requirements of general applicability that could be applied to an existing industry, whether that be new standards for signs, uh, new standards for for health and safety. Typically not land use, uh, because once the the facility is there, there's no moving it. It's not one of those types of facilities that can be moved. But, um, you know, general applicability on health and safety, air quality, those are our standards. Again, if they're being applied generally, uh, across the the board to all industries, could be applied retroactively.
So I'm a hundred percent vehemently opposed to having any kind of transference of permits. I think that, you know, this company has gone through all the work to be vetted, to go through the process, to get a permit applied. Any company that wants to follow along should have to go through the same process. In that way, that protects us. So if there have been regulation changes along the way, then those regulation changes have to be applied because it's a brand new permit. So that would be my take is take the ability to transfer a permit away completely, and then we don't have this philosophical argument.
If you take away the ability to transfer permits, you're hurting the city by potentially putting ourselves in a position where we have a bankrupt company and no way to transfer permits to a new operator. Going through the whole process again is ludicrous. If all of the, if all of the obligations can be met by the new operator, there's no reason to do all of the studies again and all of the permit applications again. There's absolutely no reason to do that. It's a waste of resources.
I would agree that they should go through the process, and that was a suggestion I made in my council comments. So long as if the transfer was made before drilling and completion, then that would be a different story. But any point after that, they would have to go through the process again.
If I may ask.
At any point after they've been drilled, they should have to go through the process again?
No, if we're transferring.
A little, a little bit of clarification, if you don't mind. Yes, no more?
Well, let me go back a step. And I will just say for simplification, I'm agree with Mayor Huesman that there should be no transferability. And I don't think it puts the city in a bad position because the new operator would come in and do exactly what the former operator did and go through the the permitting process. So it would be going through the permitting process again, and I agree with that wholeheartedly.
I think that it puts the city in a bad position if you end up with an operator who can't execute the permits. Um, it leaves the city. It leaves the city holding the bag on permits, and I think we have to give the option to transfer those permits in a sale. Otherwise, you're depleting the value of what company A has already built with the city.
Which is.
And if this, if this second operator, operator B, wants to buy those permits, and they can uphold all of the obligations that have been agreed to by the the first operator, I don't know why we would require them to go through the process of ordering all of the same types of studies, sound studies and traffic impact studies and, you know, landscaping designs, and why would we ask for all of those things to be done again if they already exist? And the things that we really want them to be able to uphold are things like bonding uh, requirements, uh, financial, we we want them to be able to, you know, do the financial pieces of this. Why would we ask them to redo work that's already been done? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Because technology changes, because conditions change, because where we did have a no development next to a well at this time, now all of a sudden we have development next to a well, or maybe the comprehensive plan has been updated and it's no longer conducive to that plan. So allowing an operator to just assume what was already there versus having to go through the entire process and take into account changes that have been there protects the city more so than not doing so.
If if I may respectfully offer counsel, um, obviously just trying to tie a couple of different conversations we've had over the night. Obviously, with the approval process going from an administrative to a quasi judicial process in front of planning commission city council. What you all are discussing, I I say balancing out the desire to want to allow for transferability, but having to undertake a process is very no different than our conditional use permit process that we currently have established. Once an applicant comes into the city with a CUP, that CUP is not transferable to uh, another entity at the same location and or to a different location. Applicant B at whatever time in the future would have to come back and take that process or take that CUP back through the process for approval, even though it may have been established for a period of time. And that's currently defined within our land development code today for for that process. So there's there's some similarities as what I'm hearing from giving the ability to still bring something through a process and allow for transferability, that's very germane to our our CUP process. And while that would be a compromise.
Quick question, what's the expiration period on the permits in Commerce City?
It depends on the type of land use that is being requested by CUP. We have, uh, certain land uses that may be more intensive in nature, where we have had what's a renewal review at at a period of time of five years, three years, one year. Uh, in some cases, if it's an innocuous land use, uh, that requires a CUP, there may be no time, uh, time renewal or CP renewal required. Um, so it's it's been an evaluation based off, based on staff and the application before us, where we've identified that that renewal, uh, period for that that request.
So just for a little bit of background, at the COGCC level, if a permit is within its approved period, two years for wells and three years for pads, those are transferable permits without having to go back through the process. I don't know why the same concept wouldn't apply at the city level. If you're within two or three years of a permit being approved, are we seriously suggesting that we're going to overhaul our our land development code and within two to three years of something being approved?
Well, given the way that this whole industry has evolved in the last ten years, I would say, yeah, I would say, yeah, that could easily happen. If you consider the fact that eight or nine years ago, there were maybe one or two permits before the COGCC for multi-well sites, and now virtually all applications are for multi-well sites, I would say, yeah. Yeah, there could be a lot of changes in a very quick amount of time. So I think it's a, I think it's really a great idea for anyone to have to come back in and reapply if they're going to, um, purchase the operator's interest.
There's nothing to purchase if there's not a permit.
Per if they plant, yes, there are. There's all the equipment. There's, there's everything on the site. They could just pick that stuff up and move it if they chose to. But at the same time, it will be important for them, it would be important to not transfer permits automatically. I agree with Mayor Huesman.
I I would not suggest they be automatically transferred. I think there should be a process. I think starting from the beginning is unnecessary. If you have a a permit that has not been executed yet, it is within the timeframe of its expiration, why would you require starting from ground zero?
Because the world changes, technology changes, there are improvements. Let's hope there continue to be improvements. I think it's very critical that that this process take place. Absolutely. This is very impactful, very impactful in this area. So I think everything that we can do to help reduce the impact is critical.
May I offer? And about, excuse me, uh, about the term of permits and Mr. Rogers, I believe the draft provides for a three-year term for an oil and gas permit once issued under the land development code, and then that permit becomes co-terminus with the COGCC to a permit when that is issued, um, unless it's otherwise expired or lapsed. It then terminates upon abandonment or reclamation of the operation. So there's a, there's a three-year plus period prior to, um, completion, and then there there's a drilling window of three years for the total number of wells that have been approved. And a requirement that, uh, if there's construction required, that a building permit be obtained within two years. So there are some time limits if that helps inform this discussion.
Thank you, Robert.
So if if operator A is able to execute those permits within a three-year period pri or whatever the expirations are, co-terminus expirations and others, why would we think that those requirements would change for operator B if they are held to the same expiration period? The expiration doesn't get extended when you transfer a permit.
No, but I mean, let's look at one eighty-one. You know, a year ago, we wouldn't be having a conversation on a lot of these items because we didn't have the ability under one, without having one eighty-one. So as legislation comes along and changes things, we have the opportunity to update our land development code and go forward. What happens if, uh, you know, new laws are passed in November through, uh, through the ballot process? You know, so by requiring somebody to have to go over from the start and play under the new rules, we're better protecting our community than if we just say, well, yeah, those rules existed back then, and you get to continue to play by them because you got a permit transfer to you instead of having to go the new process. Sorry, I just think that they should have to start from scratch with whatever rules are under on the on the table at that time.
Within an expiration period, you would not require the first operator to change the way that they are doing operations. So I don't understand how it how it even makes sense to suggest that if somebody acquires a permit that is is executable and still has time prior to expiration, why you would suggest that they should have to live with different requirements than the operator that already applied and and have the approved permit? Within one expiration period, there's absolutely no reason, no logical reason to require somebody to to adhere to different standards. We're talking about two and three-year periods. Those standards would not change if the permits weren't being transferred. So why would we change the standards if they are being transferred?
Because I have the opportunity to change the standards. If it stays with go to operator B, I don't have the opportunity to change those standards. But as soon as the new operator wants to come into the picture and take over, I have that opportunity to change the standards to make them more stringent and to better protect the community, and I'm going to take that opportunity.
You're moving the goalpost, and and I think that that's that's unfair.
I just have a question regarding, uh, so, so we've been talking about companies going bankrupt, and if they were to leave that wellsite and we can't transfer permits, then who's going to operate that in the interim?
Well, you know, we talked about liquor licenses earlier.
I was asking staff. If you don't mind.
I think hypothetical, though.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, if there's no permit and an operator can't continue to operate, who operates that? Is that them, the city's obligation? Then do we have to contract another operator to come in and operate that until something happens, or or just how does that work?
So Councilmember Madera, just to kind of answer that question, I think going back to the the way that the current uh, March tenth draft is contemplating permit transfer is essentially looking at, so for instance, if an operator is no longer to fulfill the obligations of a permit, and there's a new operator that's desired to potentially come in, you would have a permit transfer that's occurred at that time to review and make sure that the operator is able to comply with the permanent conditions essentially, and that was my understanding of what essentially occurs at the state level is in order to, and this is a scenario where, for instance, maybe nothing is built, and you have to be able to demonstrate that the operator is is fully, has the fully, is fully able to actually execute that permit. So just because a permit is is available, doesn't mean that you as an operator can automatically fulfill those permit commissions, and there needs to be some additional review at the city level to assure that there can be that transfer. So that, in that instance, I I hope that answers the question that you you had.
I think it does.
And I think another really important point here is we're only talking about the permit period. Once these wells are drilled, they can be sold to anybody, and I don't think that there's an obligation at the city level for a new operator beyond complying with current regulations. There's no obligation at that point. So we're really only talking about the permit period, which is, you know, two and three-year periods. If they, if this, if the permits lapse, then you're obligated to reapply, and you're held to the new regulation.
Councilmember Grimes, do you think it's possible at this point that you might want to, uh, discuss what your company has gone through with its bankruptcy and then transferring to another operator? Uh, perhaps that's having some impact here on what you're trying to communicate?
Uh, it's a good question, and I think it is, it is relevant. Um, I know that we would have left, we would not have been in a position to even attempt to restructure if we didn't have the value of the assets, and part of your assets are the permits that you attain. I think it's really critical to realize that it is in the city's best interest to allow transferability of permits for instances like this. We all know that Extraction filed for bankruptcy protection last week. Their intention is to restructure. If that doesn't happen, it's in our best interest for their permits to be of interest to another operator so that we have somebody else to to take those over and maintain and operate.
Maybe we might like to have a new operator of those sites have to comply with the new regulations. As it currently stands, if we allowed all of, if all of those permits are not permits, those are not permits at this point, but if all of those applications or what may turn out to be permits were then transferred, those only have the very minimal standards that were applied during the re, um, regional operators agreement and best manager practices of last fall under the previous council. With the new one eighty-one and the new options that are available, we would be in a better position to actually require that all oil and gas operators come up to the standards that are being set by the new regulations. There is logic to that because we are putting the health and safety of our residents before the interest of the operators, and that is what is critical here.
I have kind of a side question, and thank you for those comments from both of you, but to the staff, you know, how many hours have you put in and just as a, as a general, you know? How many hours have you put into this whole process to get us to this phase? To include negotiating the ROA, to include all of that, and how much has the operator paid to compensate the city for those hours? Because the comment that I just heard is, once these permits are issued, they become a commodity to the company. And so I'm curious whether or not this commodity is earned or given to the company without any kind of compensation to the city for having to put forth all the hours necessary to generate that commodity.
Thanks for the question, Mayor. I can say that staff hasn't gone through and ended a finite accounting of how many hours that had that we prescribed over. I'll say since the beginning aspect of this of this process with the land development code update and or, uh, in regards to the ROA with extraction of oil and gas.
Mr. Mayor, I I could say that once we fully engage with Extraction.
Mr. Mayor, I, I could say that once we fully engaged with extraction. That probably about 20% of my time was committed to oil and gas, which taken away from other things. And I would speculate that, that the percentage of, uh, Mr. Martinelli's time was even greater. Um, even though, but then more recently his, his position was realigned to kind of account for that.
Yeah, and I can provide some background, so kind of what my, my initial role is, uh, being a city planner. Primary duties and assignments are plan review, um, compliance with the land development code. Uh, building permit review, a number of those other things. And since 2018, have been dedicating probably around. Thirty-five to 50% of staff time working on oil and gas regulations and, um. Have been focusing a little bit more on, aside from the, the specific review of, of plans and then all of that. Of thinking a little bit more long-term on some other environmental issues. Um, I would say still probably around that, that half mark.
We're supposed to collect those fees during permit, during permit collection fees. That's where we recover our funds. Developing land development code is part of a natural taxpayer cost.
So, uh. I don't know if we're gonna reach consensus on this one tonight at least, but it's almost 10 o'clock and we still have another meeting after this. Just wondering if, uh, this would be a good stopping place.
So I would say this, Councilmember, uh, after this time, we do have a, another eight unique topics that we didn't want to get direction feedback. Um, at that same time, we did sidebar, uh, what was a robust conversation around setbacks. So I, I think to your point, I mean, obviously we've had a lot of great conversation, discussion around. And obviously there's still some others that we need to kind of go back, that we did get direction on. And, and make some accommodating changes with respect to that. So this might be a, a, a good stopping point for us and then being able to, to bring that back. Um, at a, at a future meeting, but obviously. We are here to, to, to serve and to provide, uh, the feedback and the responses to the council. But at the same time, we want to respect councils', uh, schedule and obligations that they also have outside of this item, uh, tonight.
Where's everybody thinking? You guys want to, uh, move through the rest of our agenda on this? Move into our next meeting and return to this, uh, conversation another time? Any objections to that?
I don't object, but I sure would like to make certain that, um, we do it sooner than later. Because I think there are some really important topics that have been saved for the end as well. That, um, I don't want us to overlook or. To be set aside in any fashion, so that would work. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so, uh, next on the agenda is reports. Mr. Tinklerberg, would you like to give your report?
Yes, sir. Uh, just quickly, a couple items or several items. One is, uh, at the last meeting, uh, I was told by Mr. Smith, uh. Fellow deputy city manager that comments I made about finance department were interpreted to mean that, uh, finance was not responsive. And I want to clear that up. That was absolutely not my intention. Uh, they've been busy with doing three types of accounting. Uh, one is for FEMA reimbursement, one is for CARES Act, CARES Act compliance, as well as the regular accounting for the city. Plus wrapping up the year-end, uh, financial report for 2019 plus starting budget. So, um, what I was trying to convey is they're extremely busy and I wanted to be respectful of their time. So hopefully that clears up any, uh, interpretation issues that were involved with that. Also, uh, trash pickup issues have been of concern to, uh, quite a number of residents. Uh, what happened was that there was a new employee for Republic. And, uh, that person missed part of their route. And, uh, Republic pulled that person back off and, uh, put that person back through training again. But also the question was raised, what's the best, uh, contact? And, uh, after talking with Republic, our staff reported that, uh, it still is to have customers call Republic directly. Uh, work through their customer service, uh, center. In addition, however, if there are concerns that there's, uh, issue of a lack of responsiveness and that type of thing. Please forward those to us, uh, to city staff and we will also follow up with Republic. And, um, try to get those resolved as quickly as possible. And then the third item, uh, the Chrissy grant was submitted, uh, over the weekend. Uh, and that is for the intersection to do a grade separation at 120th and Highway 85. And that's one of the topics on the agenda for the special meeting. That's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sheasley, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Do you have any other council members have any reports to give? Okay, seeing none, uh, mine is brief. Um, supposed to meet with, uh, CDOT, I believe in the morning at 9:30. I never did get a confirmation, but never heard against that. 9:30 in the morning at the Starbucks, uh, 60th and Vasquez. So, uh, Roger, if you were, uh, um, Mr. Wilson would like to be there. Like I said, I didn't get a word that we're not going, but didn't get a final confirmation that we are going either, so.
Hey Ben, I heard from Director Lou that she'll be there tomorrow, so, um. I, I overheard it, but yeah.
Great, so.
I plan to join you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, last, uh, the only other thing since it's really taken place since the last, um. Sorry, I keep looking at my Zooms over there instead of looking at that screen. Uh, since the last meeting is the amount of complaints that I'm getting regarding fireworks. And this is occurring throughout the entire city. Um, you know, I remember two years ago, we passed the emergency ordinance. Unanimous vote said, hey, let's make a minimum fine for it. If you get caught a second time, let's make a minimum fine. And prior to that vote, I do remember asking the question, if we pass this ordinance, do we have the resources to enforce the ordinance? And what I'm seeing is we are not enforcing that ordinance. And it's very disconcerting, the amount of residents who are upset about it, who are saying, hey, you have an ordinance on the books. Why are you not doing a better job to enforce it? And then I hear that we're going to do more enforcement next week because we're coming up to July 4th. So my question for this would be, are we only going to enforce this ordinance around 4th of July and New Year's? Or is this an ordinance that can be enforced year-round? And if it can't be enforced year-round, then maybe we need to take action to take it off the books. So we don't have that expectation out there that says, here, don't do fireworks, but we're not going to do anything to enforce it. So can somebody help me with where we are with the status of enforcing the firework issue that we have in all parts of the city? With all the complaints that we're receiving.
I don't know that the chief is, uh, still with us. He, he was on for a while, but, uh. Let me take that up with the chief and we can report back to you.
Looks like he's there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That information is, uh, first of all, the entire metro region is being inundated with fireworks-related. Fireworks-related calls for service. Uh, at any given point in the city, we have probably 10 officers working. There is no way imaginable we can respond to every fireworks complaint that shows up. In addition to that, uh, fireworks complaints are extremely difficult to, not just enforce. But right now, we do not have the capacity year-round to take fireworks and place them inside of our evidence vault. That's dangerous and it will cause some problems. Uh, it is in fact being enforced. The problem is we're being inundated with the calls to service related to fireworks. Yes, we typically do not do double staffing related to fireworks until a week before the 4th of July. For the rest of the year, that volume of fireworks is being handled by officers that are on routine patrol. Hopefully that answers your question.
Right, so my question, if this is an ordinance that we can't enforce and truly make work, is this truly an ordinance that we should have on the books? Cause like I said, I think we have an expectation out there in the community that you have an ordinance, why aren't you enforcing it? But the logistics of it and the inability to actually dedicate the resources to doing this. As well as somebody lights it off, goes inside, how do you prove it happened? You know, I know there's been instances here in my own neighborhood where, you know, the debris was sitting in the driveway from where they lit it off. Yet there was no proof of who did it or who didn't, so nobody got a ticket out of it and it just goes away. So I just question, and then it's just philosophical, is this an ordinance that we truly need to have on the books if it's this ineffectual?
Well, sir, that's a answer for council. I don't get involved with making the, the laws. We simply enforce what's on the books. Uh, what I can tell you is we do our best to enforce it when we can. There are some legal complications around the matter. You are absolutely correct. If we can identify who lit off the firework, all we can simply do is pick them up and leave. Uh, generally speaking, that is in fact what occurs. Uh, but whether or not the law is responsive, in my personal opinion, uh, to remand the law and get rid of it. This problem will typically just get worse, but again, that's a question for council to decide.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that input. Councilman Wadiola?
Thank you, Mayor. On, on that note, is there any way that we could start putting out messages on our social media, Instagram? That what the fines are, I saw some signs up already, but I think that might help a little. I agree with the mayor. Um, we've been getting a lot of complaints. I hear them. Um, I don't think we should take it off the books because I think it'll get worse. But I think if we start doing a campaign like ASAP, not next week. Um, blasting it on social media, this is how much the fine is. It might help a little scare some folks away. That that fine's pretty hefty, uh, Roger, if we could start doing that.
Yes, sir, that is part of our strategy. I believe, uh, we're going to be placing. The, uh, frequently asked questions out in the city manager's update this week. Our plan is already in place on enforcement. Uh, I believe we've got a calendar of where the trailers are going to go throughout the city. So we get full coverage with relations to advising people that fireworks are in fact illegal. Uh, and then the fireworks amount, the actual fine amounts will be getting pushed out on social media. We've been working with the PIO's office to get that done. That will kick off tomorrow.
I have a question. Is it just PD that's allowed to give the tickets or is Neighborhood Services allowed to like help out with that? Would that be an option, getting them involved?
Typically, it's just the PD that does that. I do know that the fire department also has some responders that go out there. Uh, typically Neighborhood Services do not.
Thank you.
All right, um, any alibis on, uh, anything to report for reports? I want to remind everybody that we're getting ready to go into a special meeting. We cannot discuss things outside the agenda on the special meeting unless we have consensus from the entire council. We do have one individual who will not be there. So if anybody has anything else that they would like to raise during the report section of this pre-scheduled meeting. Seeing none, we are adjourning the, um. Study session and moving to the special meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to take the roll.
Councilmember Madera?
Present.
Councilmember Alan Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Present.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Present.
Councilmember Hurd?
Present.
Councilmember Grimes?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Your pro temp Frank?
Present.
Your Huesman?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Looking for a motion and a sec.